Good evening. Will the members and our guests please take their seats? This meeting will now come to order. As all members have received a copy of the call of tonight's meeting, the reading of the call will be omitted. At this point, I'd like to call on Bruce Winningham, Chair of the Greenwich Military Covenant of Care and members of that organization, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Will everyone please rise? Mr. Winningham.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Winningham is going to bring us up to date on a very important event that has been organized by the Greenwich Military Covenant of Care in the near future. Mr. Winningham.
We've been at war for 12 years. 2.5 million of our sons and daughters were deployed there. It's about 1% of all the non-senior adults in the country. So that 1% versus the 99 who didn't go to war senses a degree of disconnect, a sense that maybe the country doesn't quite understand what they did, the experiences that they had, and the suffering of their fallen comrades. It comes to home here in our town as well. Our group has about 18 mothers who saw their sons and daughters graduate just in the past three years, prepared for that war, go to war, and come back. If you extrapolate from what we know to the rest of the war and the rest of the town, it could be 75, 100 moms and dads that saw a son graduate, choosing a uniform, go to war. We don't know who they are. They have a sense, though, that we possibly don't fully appreciate what they experienced. How does the town deal with that? What can they do? Three generations ago, at the end of World War I, there was no problem. They all marched. They were all down every main street in town. Will Rogers at the time quipped, "If we really want to honor the soldiers, we'll put them in the stands and let the people march by." So what we're here to announce is that on the morning of Veterans Day, before the American Legion traditional event at 11 o'clock, the town will gather in festive red, white, and blue celebration, no marching band, no vehicles. We will walk as a group down Greenwich Avenue to the Board of Ed building where we will then be ready for the ceremony at 11 o'clock. Back quickly to the 2.5 million. We sent 2.5 million people to war. 750,000 of them are in the medical system here in the United States. It's believed another quarter of a million should be in, but we're afraid to. That means we sent 2.5 million to war and a million came home hurt. And 1.5 million came home not hurt. What else can we do? In this walk, everybody in that walk will be an extra in a movie. We're going to film it in multiple locations. We're going to create videos. There's a wonderful young woman who has Sundance Film Festival credits to her, and we will edit it into a series of three-minute videos. This woman might get the first Oscar for three-minute video someday. We're going to send them to military servicemen in that medical system. Finally, the other 1.5 million. There are very few jobs left in the military because the economic system has cut out the middle-level jobs. They're trying to transition to civilian jobs, just like your children and grandchildren are probably doing. Two things that our town is going to do. One, the business development for veterans is going to help the entrepreneurial veterans start a business of their own to become self-sufficient. Those who enter the capitalist bureaucracy like the rest of us and are trying to transition out of military, there's an organization called Mentor a Veteran During Your Commute to Work. And there'll be ways to recruit more people who can help them get accustomed to it. So Veterans Day, 9:30 in the morning, top of Greenwich Avenue, join the town, walk downhill in four blocks, Dart Street, honor our American veterans. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Kathy Doreen of District 3 for bringing this to my attention, and Randall Huffman and Mrs. Huffman for their work in connection with the Covenant of Care. All right. Bill Drake, is Bill here? Chairman of our Budget Overview Committee.
Good evening, everyone. The Budget Overview Committee would like to provide a brief summary of where the budget stands. The Board of Estimate is now considering draft guidelines for the next budget. These guidelines identify several key drivers of costs. Healthcare is a $55 million annual cost to the town. The annual pension contribution is likely to continue to rise this year to $23.1 million. Labor contracts and headcount together really drive our costs. And interest and principal payments on debt for capital projects are also an important variable under discussion. The guidelines set a goal of maintaining low and predictable tax rate increases. The target is a mill rate increase of 3.0% or less. At this early stage in the process, the Budget Office creates a one-page first look at costs. From this first look, it appears that $10 million in reductions must be found to achieve the 3.0% goal. This is the gap or the challenge which exists every year, although this gap is a large one. Our committee's view was that the town's debt policy and the goals in these draft guidelines deserved support. As a committee, we voted to authorize this brief report by a vote of seven yeses, two nays, and one abstention. District 2 voted no because he wanted to see a lower target increase in the mill rate. District 8 voted no because she disagrees with the current debt policy due to the low interest rate environment and thinks that to do projects, we should borrow more. Thank you.
Thank you. That now brings us to the call for tonight's meeting. I notified our district and committee chairs that based upon reports received, I would be recommending the following organization of the items before us tonight. First, let me say that Item 14, which is a sense of the meeting resolution regarding a bargaining unit within the public schools, commonly referred to as Little Lyuna, that item has been withdrawn by the Board of Education, so we will not be taking up Item 14. Of the remaining 14 items, I will recommend that we place Items 4, 5, and 15 on our consent calendar, and if those remain on the consent calendar, we will hear no committee reports and no debate on those. I will recommend that we combine Items 2 and 3, the Community Development Block Grant resolutions for voting purposes, which would leave us to consider separately the remaining items, which would be Item 1, and Items 6 through 13. So at this point, I will designate items, the following three items, for our consent calendar. And as I said, if they remain on our consent calendar, this is all you will hear about them tonight. Item 4 is a transfer of funds from the Community Development Block Grant Contingency Fund Account for Fiscal Year 2013 to an account whereby those will be distributed to projects as stated in the call. Item 5 is the acceptance of a two-year grant from the University of Connecticut Foundation in the amount of $87,000 to improve the quality of science and math education in the Greenwich Schools. And Item 15 is an appropriation of $60,000 for the replacement of a compressor unit at Dorothy Hamill Rink. Is there any objection to the placement of those three items on our consent calendar? Hearing none and absent objection, will our district chairs please mark your voting cards, consent calendar Items 4, 5, and 15, and proceed to poll your delegation? With respect to our... Mr. Clark, what is your point of information?
...call for approval for minutes of the last meeting.
Oh, thank you. Let us do that. All right. We do have to approve our minutes of the September meeting. All right. As all members have received a copy of the proposed minutes of our September 16 meeting, the reading of those minutes will be omitted. We do have a change as to the attendance. In District 12, David Althano was present. He is marked absent in the proposed minutes. We will make that correction, and that would change the attendance to 190 present, 38 absent with two vacancies. All right. Are there any other suggested changes to those proposed minutes? Hearing none and absent objection, the proposed minutes as amended stand adopted upon unanimous consent. Brings us back to our call. It was the consensus of the reporting districts to combine the two items relating to the next fiscal year Community Development Block Grant Funds. Those are Items 2 and 3. Is there a motion to combine those two items for voting purposes?
Moved.
It has been moved and seconded to combine Items 2 and 3 for voting purposes. Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable, and it requires a 2/3 majority to pass. All those in favor of combining Items 2 and 3 for voting purposes, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? That motion has carried. All right. So we will begin with those combined items and then proceed in numerical order with the remaining separate items. So Item... We'll do this together. Items 2 and 3 now come before us. I am aware that there is a public hearing requirement, and as soon as this is before us, I will open the public hearing. Princess is Princess Urfe here? With Princess Urfe, Director of Community Development, with Items 2 and 3.
Good evening. Item number 2 is the resolution of the Board of Estimate and Taxation approving the proposed budget for the Community Development Block Grant Program during year 2014. The anticipated entitlement grant for program year 2014 is estimated at $680,000. Item number 3 is the resolution of the Representative Town Meeting authorizing the first selectman to apply for and accept Community Development Block Grant funding from HUD for program year 2014. Thank you.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolutions on Items 2 and 3? The resolutions on Items 2 and 3 have been moved and seconded. At this point, I will open the public hearing on those items. May we have the reports of the committees that considered that? Those two, beginning with Alexis Vulgaris, Chair of our Health and Human Services Committee.
Good evening. The Health and Human Services Committee met last Tuesday to discuss the proposed Community Development Block Grant Budget for program year 2014. The CDBG program is federally funded program through HUD. Item number 2 of the BET... Item number 2 is the BET Budgets Committee approval of the proposed block grant budget. This is the item that comes before us each October. The BET and the RTM each need to review the budget and approve it, and then the final application can be submitted by the first selectman on behalf of the town of Greenwich to HUD. You should all have received a draft copy of the proposed annual one-year action plan in September. The Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee, which meets throughout the summer, is the group responsible for reviewing funding applications and making suggestions regarding the allocation of funds. The advisory committee is comprised of 26 representatives from the RTM, BET, Greenwich Housing Authority, and the Department of Social Services, as well as other members from the community. Three members of the Health and Human Services Committee also sit on the advisory committee, Sam Timm, Bill Brambeck, and myself. Princess Urfe, the Community Development Advisor, met with the Health and Human Services Committee and explained the proposed budget. It's anticipated that the town will receive approximately $680,000 in fiscal year 2014 from HUD. Per HUD guidelines and regulations, 20% of this total budgeted amount, or about $136,000, is dedicated to administrative expenses. 15% or about $102,000 can be allocated to public service programs, while the remaining 65% or about $442,000 is dedicated to capital improvements such as property rehabilitations and acquisitions. This year, 19 programs applied for public service funding, and the advisory committee recommended funding for 17 of the 19 programs. Most programs received $5,000 in funding, which is the minimum amount, but several were funded at the $10,000 level. When considering how much to allocate to each program, the advisory committee took into consideration multiple factors, such as the program's impact on the community, number of individuals served, fundraising capacity within the organization, past block grant support, and did the organization receive any additional grants from either the town of Greenwich or another source. There was also extensive discussion surrounding each allocation. In addition to the public service funding requests, a total of 16 organizations applies for capital improvement funding. Of the 16, the committee recommended funding for 10 programs using the same criteria previously mentioned. Our committee took a vote on Items 2 and 3, and we voted 8-0-0 to support this, with Districts 1, 2, 3, and 7 absent. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no symbolism to that red sweatshirt, is there? Are you wearing your red socks also? Oh, okay. Kip Bergweger, Vice Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
The Legislative and Rules Committee took up this item last Monday at our meeting, and we were assisted by Princess Urfe. She explained that this is an annual application, and the language of the resolutions was similar to past years, although the dates have been changed. Except that, Mary Ferry noted that one phrase that we had added in the 2012 resolution on Item 2 was dropped out. Princess Urfe had worked from the form of the resolution before it had gotten to the RTM and been revised, and that's why it was dropped out. So we voted to put that item, that phrase, back into Item 2, and we'll make a motion at the appropriate time to do so. But with the resolutions as revised, our vote on both Items 2 and 3 was 11-0-0, with District 4 absent.
Thank you. Gordon Ennis with the report of our Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Happy Halloween. Ladies and gentlemen, the Finance Committee met last Monday in the Town Hall Lounge. The committee was called to order at 7:32 and adjourned at 11:54. I hope we don't have to do that again. All districts were present. District 2, however, was absent for Items 1 and 2 and 13 through 15, so you'll see that reflected in the votes. The committee was very familiar with both of these items. It has reviewed them last year, and you all remember, we got the book in September that described the projects and allocations. And so we were able to go right to a vote, and those votes were 11-0-0 on both Item 1 and Item 2. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bergweger.
On behalf of the Legislative and Rules Committee, I move that in the second whereas clause of Item 2, which is on Page 2 at the top of the call, in the second line from the top of the call, it reads 106, and it will also forward a copy of this resolution, then insert the words "to the Representative Town Meeting." And that's the change.
That's it?
Yep.
All right. Is there any objection to that proposed amendment? Hearing none and absent objection, the amendment is adopted upon unanimous consent. Discussion on Items 2 and 3. All right. Any member of the public is welcome to address us. I see no interested speakers, so at this point, I will close the public hearing on Items 2 and 3 and call for the vote. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, combine Items 2 and 3, and proceed to poll your delegation? I have the result of the vote on the consent calendar items. Those were Items 4, 5, and 15. Those in favor, 164. Opposed, zero. Abstaining, zero. The consent calendar items have carried. We now begin with the separate items, and the first is a postponed item from our September meeting. So that item is now before us. That is a resolution appointing Scott Salisbury to be a regular member of the Inland, Wetlands, and Water Courses Agency for a term expiring March 31, 2017. And Mr. Clark, would you like to move to amend what the language that is currently before us actually does not match what was in our minutes? If you look in the minutes for September, you'll see that we actually do have the correct name of the agency here, but why don't you just move to amend it?
Mr. Moderator moves. We meant the... And I'm quoting line 2 here. Inland, Wetlands, and Water Courses.
Well, that was critical.
All right. So we will insert an ampersand and an S at the end of Water Courses, one word. Is there an objection to Mr. Clark's... First of all, is there a second? It has been moved and seconded to amend. Is there any objection to that? Hearing none, the motion stands adopted upon unanimous consent. May we have the reports from the committees that considered Item Number 1? Mr. Von Keiseling, Chair of our Appointments Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the beginning of the Halloween season. Welcome. We met with Mr. Salisbury in September. We interviewed him at some length. We found that he had done a lot of work in taking the courses and studying what needed to be studied for alternate to get themselves up to speed and be fully competent as a regular member. Remember, our system is to usually try to hit alternates on to get them prepared to take over for regular membership, so they hit the ground running and they're competent. He has taken all those courses. In fact, he said to us that the courses he took now qualify him to be an employee of the Inland/Wetland Agency because they are so complete. It's the same course. We voted for him 11-0-1. District 2 abstained.
Thank you. Peter Berg, Chair of our Land Use Committee.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, fellow members. So this item is a bit controversial. The RTM Land Use Committee met on Thursday, October 17, in the Hayden Room. All districts were represented. This was a special meeting to take up a nominee for the Inland/Wetlands Agency, which... and the Wetlands Agency was meeting on our normal meeting date, so we met on a Thursday. The committee interviewed Scott Salisbury, who was nominated by the Board of Selectmen to serve as a regular member of the Inland/Wetlands Water Courses Agency for a term expiring March 31, 17. The Land Use Committee voted to postpone this item indefinitely. The vote was 7-4-1. Districts 3, 5, 7, and 9 opposed. District 6 abstained. Mr. Salisbury has served as an alternate member of the agency since March 2012. He is a wealth advisor by profession. He has taken the prescribed wetlands courses offered by the state and has attended continuing education... a continuing education course. When asked about making the transition from alternate to regular member, he noted that other members have done so with less experience as an alternate than he has had. Mr. Salisbury said the Greenwich Wetlands regulations conform to the state wetlands regulations. He does not think Greenwich's regulations need to vary from the state regulations. Mr. Salisbury stated that the goal of the Wetlands Agency is to protect, preserve, and maintain the wetlands of Greenwich and the critters who live there. He expressed very high regard for the current Wetlands Agency Board and its professional staff. If the RTM appoints Mr. Salisbury, that will end the service of the current six-year Agency Board Chairman Lawrence Perry. Mr. Perry's term on the Wetlands Board has expired, but he has continued to serve. Mr. Salisbury said he would be willing to continue as an alternate if the RTM finds a way to retain Lawrence Perry. Following the interview of Mr. Salisbury, we heard from three veteran members of the Wetlands Agency Board and from our three selectmen. Agency Board members Stephen Schufelus, Elliott Benton, and Bill Galvin expressed their disappointment that the Board of Selectmen had not renominated Lawrence Perry. They objected to the lack of transparency in the process since the selectmen had not substantiated their reasons. They stated that the loss of Mr. Perry's leadership would leave a critical vacancy at the top of the Agency Board since the Agency Board Vice Chair, John Conti, recently resigned. All of the Agency Board members, including Scott Salisbury, had signed a letter to the selectmen last March in support of the chairman, Mr. Perry. They had reelected Mr. Perry their chairman five times. The Agency Board members emphasized that their comments were not a personal comment on Mr. Salisbury. One Wetlands Board member referred to press reports that the selectmen had reacted to pressure from a resident of Zacchaeus Mead Lane. The resident had opposed a Wetlands application in his neighborhood and had urged the selectmen not to reappoint Mr. Perry. The Board member said the selectmen's failure to reappoint Mr. Perry could have a chilling effect on the Wetlands Agency. First selectman, Peter Tessie, said he nominated Mr. Perry for another term and would have voted for him, but the other two selectmen did not second his motion, so the motion died without any discussion or a vote. Nominees for town boards are interviewed separately by the selectmen. Mr. Tice said he did not support Mr. Perry because in his interview, Mr. Perry had prejudged the Cos Cob synagogue case, which had not yet been heard by the agency, by saying something like, "Just wait until that case goes through." Mr. Tice acknowledged that he did not ask Mr. Perry to clarify his remark. Mr. Marzullo said he did not support Mr. Perry because in his interview of Mr. Perry, he got the impression that Mr. Perry did not want to be reappointed. Mr. Marzullo indicated that Mr. Perry told him he was willing to step down if there was someone else who wanted to serve. Mr. Marzullo acknowledged that he did not follow up with Mr. Perry, asking him whether he wanted to withdraw his nomination. Mr. Marzullo stated emphatically that he was not influenced by the Zacchaeus Mead Lane resident. Mr. Berg cited a precedent from 1999 when the selectmen did not renominate the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Peter Joyce, and instead nominated an alternate member, Gene Barr. The RTM wanted to retain Mr. Joyce, so it turned down Ms. Barr and later reappointed Mr. Joyce. Mr. Berg read alternative actions that the committee could take, which the moderator had sent. One option is for the RTM to postpone indefinitely the appointment of Scott Salisbury. If the RTM postpones Mr. Salisbury's appointment, Mr. Perry would continue to serve, and Mr. Salisbury would also continue to serve as an alternate. A motion for the RTM to postpone indefinitely was made by the delegate from District 4 and seconded by the delegate from District 11. The vote on the motion was seven in favor, four against, and one abstaining. District 3 voted no, saying the Land Use Committee is dysfunctional. District 5 said she is willing to see the agency make a transition and supports the selectmen's rationale. District 7 said the Land Use Committee is the wrong forum for this action and supports fresh leadership for the agency. District 9 said he respects the actions of the selectmen. District 6 abstained. Mr. Chairman, at the appropriate time, on behalf of the Land Use Committee, I wish to make the motion to postpone indefinitely.
Are there any further committee reports on Item 1? Ms. Nacinovich, District 2.
Point of information, I'd like to correct the Appointments Committee vote. The vote was 11-0-0, not 11-0-1.
All right. Mr. Von Keiseling, is that 11-0-0 on Item 1?
My chairman, vice chairman, and I concur on 11-0-1.
I was not there. I was not there.
You're absent.
I was absent.
So absent would be 11-0-0 if District 2 did not vote. Thank you. All right. Mr. Berg?
Sorry, I'm voting on the previous item here. Thank you. So on behalf of the Land Use Committee, I move to postpone the appointment of Mr. Salisbury indefinitely.
All right. That being offered on behalf of one of our committees, it does not require a second. The motion to postpone indefinitely is debatable, and debate can go into the main question. It requires a majority for adoption. Discussion on the Land Use Committee motion to postpone item number one indefinitely. And I'd ask any interested speakers on this to please come down, and you can sit in those chairs up front. Mr. Labine?
This will be a bit repetitious, but let me proceed nevertheless. I support this motion to postpone indefinitely the nomination of Mr. Scott Salisbury. I support the motion because to approve the nomination of Mr. Salisbury would cause a gross injustice to the person not nominated, namely Lawrence Perry. Mr. Perry is a 14-year member of the Wetlands Agency and is chairman. His current term expires soon, has expired. He continues to serve until his successor is appointed, and the appointment of Mr. Salisbury would end Mr. Perry's membership on Wetlands. I also support this motion because the loss of Mr. Perry would deprive Wetlands of invaluable experience. This is particularly true because the Wetlands Vice Chair, John Conti, recently resigned. I do not support this resolution, motion, because of any doubts regarding the qualifications of Mr. Salisbury. You've heard them, they're extensive, and they're quite adequate. I would again point out that Mr. Salisbury joined, was a signer of the petition that went to the selectmen, asking that Mr. Perry be renominated, and that he, Salisbury, would be pleased to continue as an alternate member if the RTM could find a way to retain Mr. Perry. The essential facts are fairly simple. The three selectmen attended the October 17 meeting of the Land Use Committee and explained what happened. As a candidate, Mr. Perry was individually interviewed by each of the selectmen. This is the standard procedure. They then met to vote on the nomination. Mr. Tessie nominated Mr. Perry. However, neither of the other selectmen would second the nomination, thereby effectively killing Mr. Perry's nomination. Mr. Tice stated that he had not seconded the nomination because he believed Mr. Perry had prejudged a pending application involving the synagogue in Cos Cob. Mr. Tice said he based his belief on this comment made by Mr. Perry, quote, "Just wait until that case goes through." To take this ambiguous comment and interpret it as proof of prejudging is patently unfair. This is particularly true as Mr. Tice did not mention his concern to Mr. Perry or give him a chance to clarify what he meant by the comment. Mr. Marzullo said he did not second the nomination because of his categorical, that's his word, belief that Mr. Perry did not want to be nominated. Now, this is extraordinary. It means that Mr. Perry was going through the nomination process with the three selectmen in order not to be nominated. Mr. Marzullo did not ask Mr. Perry whether he did or did not want to be nominated. To deprive Mr. Perry of the nomination for these reasons, I believe, are a gross injustice to Mr. Perry. It also means that the two selectmen, for highly dubious reasons, have deprived the RTM, which is the sole appointing authority-
Mr. Labine, we do not comment on motives. We discuss the facts, we can discuss our own opinions, but we do not categorize others' motives.
Well, I wasn't aware of, I wasn't aware of, but never mind. The RTM is the sole appointing authority, and the ability to review and decide whether a veteran member of the Wetlands Agency should be reappointed resides here. I suggest it is appropriate for the selectmen to reconsider their decision to not second the nomination of Mr. Perry and allow his nomination to come before this body. I urge you to support the motion to postpone indefinitely the appointment of Mr. Salisbury. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion to postpone item one indefinitely? Mr. Von Keiseling, District 8?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, and particularly Dr. Carlson. It's good to see you. I put to you that the question before the body tonight is very simple. It's item number one, and it reads, "Resolve that the following named person, nominated by the Board of Selectmen, be appointed a member of the Inland-Wetlands and Water Courses Agency for a term expiring 3/31/17." That is the question before us. Is Mr. Salisbury qualified to be a member of Inland-Wetlands or not? That's what you're being asked, yes or no. Now, Land Use, in its wisdom, has come up with other subsidiary concerns about this, and they're using an artifice of procedure to affect what they'd like to see-
Mr. Von Keiseling, I will remind you as well. We are not commenting on the quality, artifice is a word we are not going to use. That is an-
I wasn't real, I didn't realize in my dictionary that was adjective.
It is.
Thank you, sir. I'm glad that you can lead us on that.
You can give us your opinions and the facts that support it.
I will gladly give you my opinion, sir. The art, as I say, they have, the reason I'm calling it an artifice is because I, there's twice two precedents for this occasion, one which Mr. Berg mentioned, and another one, both of which I organized and brought through the RTM. One was way back about 20 years ago with Antoinette Bowling, some of you old timers may remember, who was put on the Board of Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-month term, filling out a term for three months. We kept her on the board for five years, using this procedure. The second one was Mr. Joyce. Mr. Joyce, both of these are quite different than the situation here. Mr. Joyce particularly had a personal issue with the first selectman of the time, who had served with Mr. Joyce when he was chairman, on the P&amp;Z, and had, they had a history of difference of opinion, let's say. And that was what the basis of this whole situation, which I think the RTM felt was not appropriate. Now, believe me, this is not something we do, and we take lightly or weigh to duck a responsibility. Mr. Salisbury has been recognized by all parties, especially his fellow members on the Inland-Wetlands Agency, as being very competent and very proper to be appointed member. Nobody's arguing about that. So the question you have in item number one is answered by everybody? Yes, he can be a member, he should be a member. The only reason they wouldn't be is because somebody would like to keep another person on instead through this, what does that call that, if it's not an artifice? A construct, how's that? In the code, we have a separation of powers. We in the RTM have our powers and our responsibilities, the Board of Selectmen have theirs. There is no question that it is the absolute prerogative to nominate who the Board of Selectmen wishes, for whatever reason they want. That's their prerogative. It could be political, it could be all kinds of reasons. We have to appoint them, but it is their prerogative to put them forward. Only in extraordinary circumstances I think it's wise for the RTM to override, if you like, that decision by the Board of Selectmen. If you think that this is such a critical situation of such import that you should do this, then you might consider what the Land Use Committee is suggesting. I'm suggesting to you that we should move on. Mr. Perry, who, by the way, I appreciate very much and respect, and I've followed his career very favorably over the years, this has, again, nothing to do with him, I would suggest that a motion postponed indefinitely is a cheap avoidance of an RTM responsibility. If you believe that there's a serious enough problem that Mr. Salisbury should not be appointed and therefore keep Mr. Perry in place, then we should go to the appointment vote, and we vote Mr. Salisbury up or down, yes or no, Mr. Salisbury. If you vote no, the selectmen can at a later date bring Mr. Salisbury back when it may be more appropriate to your mind. But to simply postpone indefinitely is a duck and run. It's a way of what we used to call the bathroom vote, where everybody goes away and they can't be countered and take responsibility. I think the RTM has to face this straight on, and they say, "Up or down, yes or no, Mr. Salisbury," and leave it at that. This postpone indefinitely, I ask you, please, do not weaken the RTM's integrity by this backdoor effort.
Further discussion on the motion to postpone indefinitely? Peter Quigley, District 7?
Good evening. I'm Peter Quigley, District 7. I sit as a delegate on the Land Use Committee. I agree with Mr. Von Keiseling. The call item is to appoint Mr. Salisbury, who appears to be very qualified to fill a regular position, and I would ask that you decline this alternate motion to vote for Mr. Salisbury. This is not an issue of the former chair of the Wetlands Commission. It is to appoint a regular member of the Wetlands Commission. So I ask that you turn this motion down in order to vote up or down, as Mr. Von Keiseling has stated, for the regular member, Mr. Salisbury, who is very well qualified to serve in this Wetlands Commission. Thank you.
Bernard Schneider, District 12?
Thank you. I will try to be brief. I think Mr. Berg and Mr. Labine summarized accurately the facts of the case, so I won't go into that. I could do no better than quote Dr. Martin Luther King. "Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter." Ultimately, it's the role of the RTM to act as a conscience of the town. Philosophers will tell you that it's impossible to define justice. Everyone has their own definition of justice. But as human beings, we can sense a sense of injustice. We know it when we make an improper remark, an off-the-cuff remark. We just feel it when an injustice is being around us. To those who feel that the voting on Mr. Salisbury will in fact remove Mr. Perry and that this is an injustice, I suggest that you support the motion of the Land Use Committee. Thank you.
Peter Berg, District 8?
I'll be brief. So if you vote yes on this motion to suspend indefinitely, then both Mr. Salisbury and Mr. Perry continue to serve, and that is a very good outcome. Mr. Perry is an important member of the Wetlands Board. He is a lawyer by profession. When Wetlands turns down an application, Mr. Perry knows how to word the decision so that it will stand up in court. The Zacchaeus Mead case was appealed by three neighbors to the Superior Court, and the town won. Mr. Perry is a 14-year member of the Wetlands Board. The Wetlands regulations involve a very long learning curve. He was elected chairman six years ago and has been reelected by the Board each year unanimously. There are no Wetlands Board members here tonight to speak on Mr. Perry's behalf because the Wetlands Board is meeting as we speak, but I do have a copy of their letter, which was signed by all of the members of the agency, including Mr. Salisbury, urging the Board of Selectmen to reappoint Mr. Perry. So in conclusion, once again, if this motion passes, both Mr. Perry and Mr. Salisbury will continue to serve on the Wetlands Board. It's a win-win, so I urge you to vote yes on this motion. Thank you.
Further discussion on the Land Use Committee motion to postpone item one indefinitely? Mr. Conway?
If we vote no, does that kick Mr. Salisbury off the board entirely?
All right. Let me, you're talking about the motion to postpone?
No, no, I mean-
All right. Before us, before us at the moment is a motion to postpone item one indefinitely. This is a procedural device that actually, if adopted, and it requires a majority vote to adopt, it has the effect of killing the item.
No, I understand.
But let me just explain, please. So it actually has the effect of reversing yays and nays, if, in a sense, in the normal course. So if we, if we, it is considered to be an indirect rejection of the item, so that you're not explicitly rejecting it for whatever reason you believe appropriate. But it would kill the item. If we were to defeat the motion to postpone indefinitely and then take up item one on its merits and vote no, is that your question?
Right.
That would simply reject Mr. Salisbury as a regular member. He would continue to serve as an alternate member. In both cases, by the way, if we, if we were to adopt the motion to postpone indefinitely, he would continue to serve as an alternate member. If we were to get to item one on the merits and reject it, he would continue to serve as an alternate member. Let me, let me just talk about the effect of rejecting item one, whether by adopting the motion to postpone indefinitely by a majority vote or by rejecting item one on the merits. What that means, and the town attorney and I agree that either event would constitute a rejection of this nomination under the terms of our charter, which requires the selectmen to nominate within a certain period of time following the expiration of a term. And so if either of those events occurs, we adopt the motion to postpone indefinitely or reject item one on the merits, there would be a four-month window that would begin to run within which the selectmen would have to nominate another candidate, and it would be up to the selectmen as to who they nominate. If they failed to nominate anyone, then the power to nominate would fall to the RTM. Okay? Lucy Krasner, District 5?
My question is, I-
Why, would you please come forward?
My question is, Mr. Moderator, it might be, since Mr. Conti was their vice chairman, I assume he was a full member. So if he has resigned, there appears to be a full member position available. If we turn down this Mr. Salisbury for a full member by making it postponed indefinitely, we can't bring him back to take Mr. Conti's position as a full member?
Well, this is where it becomes very important that there is some record kept of what seat a nominee is being proposed for. So what you are suggesting now is there are two vacancies, the term has expired for two seats, and those have not yet been appointed by the RTM. This has, this particular nomination is specific as to the seat currently held by Mr. Perry. And is your question, if we were to reject this by either method that I described, could the selectmen then nominate him to fill the regular position, that, another regular position that is vacant? And I believe the answer to that is yes, of course.
Okay. So because we're postponing it if that goes through indefinitely, it doesn't mean it couldn't be put forward?
But we would not have the ability to do that.
Understand that.
Okay.
But that the selectmen could, if they so chose.
Now, I see Mr. Tessie would like to comment, so why don't we see if there's something we are missing? Peter Tessie, our first selectman?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, and ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. The position vacated by Mr. Conti, I believe, was filled by Joseph Rogers, who was also an alternate and was elevated, and he was the most senior of the alternates, and so therefore he was elevated, and you approved-
So that, that is not a vacancy?
Correct.
Is what you're saying?
Correct. His term expires 3/31/17, for which you had acted on earlier this year.
Thank you. All right. Further discussion on the Land Use Committee motion to postpone item one indefinitely? Will the dis, now, let me, let me just make it clear. We are now voting on the motion to postpone indefinitely. In effect, if you want to kill this item through the motion to postpone indefinitely, you vote yes. If you want to take item one up on its merits, you- If you want to take item one up on its merits, you should vote no on this motion to postpone indefinitely. All right? To kill the item, you vote yes. To continue discussing it and taking it up on the merits, you vote no. Will the district chairs, please mark your voting cards, land use committee, motion to postpone, item one indefinitely, and proceed to poll your delegation? I ask that you expedite that vote, as we will need to await the results of the vote before we can continue. I do have the results of the vote on our... Oh, I'm sorry. I gave you the result of the vote on the consent calendar items. Those were items four, five, and 15. I was informed that there was actually an error in, on one of the voting cards where one individual had, someone was absent and mistakenly put an X in that box, so we have to reduce that vote by one. The, the yes votes total 163, none opposed, none abstaining. So the vote on the consent calendar items was actually 163, 00. I also have the results of the vote on the combined items. Those were the community development black grant items for fiscal year 2014. Items two and three, those in favor, 168, opposed, zero, abstaining, one. Those combined items have carried. All right? So we will await the results of the pending vote before proceeding further. Oh, okay. Mr. Tuthill, do you want to offer a motion that governs debate for the balance of the evening?
Bob Tuthill, District Four.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members, I move that further discussion at this meeting be limited to three minutes per speaker, per motion. Thank you.
It has been moved and seconded to limit debate for the balance of the meeting to three minutes per speaker, per item, per motion. Per motion, per item. All right. Because that motion to limit debate applies to the balance of, of the agenda, it is debatable. It does require a two-thirds majority to pass. Discussion on Mr. Tuthill's motion to limit debate to three minutes. Mr. Schneider?
Good evening.
District Twelve.
I'm sorry. I don't mean to take any more of your time. We had the same motion last week. As I was spoken at and walked back to my seat, I heard people say, "Well, maybe it's past our bedtime, maybe it's want to see Monday Night Football, maybe it's whatever reason." So rather than describe motivation, could Mr. Tuthill explain to his organization why he believes it's appropriate to limit debate to three minutes?
Mr. Schneider, if Mr. Tuthill wants to speak in favor of the motion, he has that opportunity. But we, we don't, I don't recognize people who then point the finger and say, "Get up and speak." Everyone is free to speak, as are you.
I understand that.
So you've indicated you'd be interested to know what he has to say. If he wants to say anything, he will. Mr. Von Keiseling?
Okay, fine.
District Eight.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As that wonderful slogan goes, inquiring minds want to know. I think this is redux. Weren't we here just a month ago with the same discussion on three minutes and why? Ironically, we were here at the same time with the lease being right before us. Ironically, we're here with a lot of people who wanted, from the public, who wanted to speak and address this and had prepared themselves to do it. Ironically, according to the charter, we are the representative town meeting. It is a town meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot. Mr. Von Keiseling? A police officer came in and asked that this announcement be made. There is a car, a Subaru, that is blocking someone, and it must be moved immediately. The license plate is 749-E-U-Y. 749-E-U-Y, a Subaru. Thank you, Mr. Von Keiseling.
And as usual, your timing is precise. It was my speech, not yours, and it was interrupted, sir. The point being, the RTM, if you read the charter, is a town meeting, just like the Norman Rockwell one, where everybody who's an elector can come and say their mind and have a vote. Unfortunately, we can't fit 32,000 electors in this room, so we have an RTM. We do their work for them. However, when the RTM was created, they very specifically said that any elector has the right to address the RTM and to express his feelings, his wants, his way of influencing the people who represent him. I take, for people who are not necessarily as professional as, say, the mover of this point, or other people in here, that three minutes is being a bit shutting them down or cutting them off. This is something that these people have waited a year, a year they've waited to address this. They've gone through meeting after meeting after meeting of joint subcommittees, all kinds of things they've gone through. They've been through pure hell in time and effort, and they want to speak to you. But no, we don't want to hear with them, because as my friend Bernie Schneider suggested, perhaps it's getting late, people are tired, maybe there's a football game, whatever the reason, it's a convenience, we want to shut them up. We don't want to hear what they've said. We already know what they're going to tell us, right? We know what they want. We know their mind. Why listen to them? Let's just shut them down with a three-minute rule, automatically, like my friend from District, is it Four now, has done consistently, year after year, meeting after meeting, like a knee-jerk, three-minute rule. I take this as an affront to the democratic process and...
Mr. Clark, please state your point of order.
Your point of order is well taken. Mr. Von Keiseling, either give us your opinion without making ad hominem attacks, or I will take the floor away from you.
Mr. Moderator.
I'm not discussing that with you.
I know. You never like to discuss it, sir. You have a one-way street here. You don't want to discuss it. I referred to the members' position, not by name. I believe it's appropriate in every legislative body in the world...
I'm not arguing with you.
...to address that.
If you don't continue, I will take the floor away from you.
You're saying the RTM is unique in that, sir. I take, I think you're being rather prejudiced in your ruling, but that's my opinion, and I guess I'm welcome to it. So the point being, do we have a democracy or do we have a railroad? Thank you.
Kit Bergweger speaking on the motion to limit debate.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I oppose this motion. As was noted before, this motion was made last meeting. At that meeting, there were a number of members of the public who were here, who came to speak, to give us their views on some very important and complicated issues. I spoke to one person who was a very good friend of mine and happens to be a very highly-respected person in this town, who's very active in many, many fields. He felt he'd been kicked in the teeth by that motion. He said, "If that's the RTM's view, then why should I bother with you? You don't want to hear what we have to say? Then we, then I'm just, feel rejected." And to make a three-minute motion on the items that are coming up, which are complex and very important to a number of people in this, in this room, is an insult, I believe, to the people of this town. And I think that all of the RTMs is perfectly capable of spending more than three minutes on listening to one person's views, so you can get a complete picture of the issues and get a much better understanding, which will help you make a well-reasoned decision. Thank you.
Further discussion on the pending motion to limit debate. Dr. Carlson, District One.
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM, I must ask you to consider what would happen if we have a very overzealous orator come to this microphone and give a great oration for us to listen to for half an hour or more. There must be some moderation...
The moderator would cut him off at 10 minutes.
That would be, that would be a mercy. But a three-minute mercy would be even better. And I think we have to protect ourselves from somebody who perhaps means very well, but unfortunately gets a little bit excited and talks too much. Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion to limit debate. All right. This requires a two-thirds majority to pass. We will take a recorded vote. Will the districts, please mark your voting cards, Tuthill motion to limit debate. This is for the balance of the evening. If you are in favor of the three-minute limit, you should vote yes. If you are opposed, you should vote no. And I will remind you that Robert's Rules provides that in the absence of a limit, a 10-minute limit will apply. I have the results of the vote on the Land Use Committee motion to postpone item one indefinitely. Those in favor, 101, opposed, 66, abstaining, nine. That item has carried. All right. We will continue with the business of the meeting, and if we get to debate before we have the results of the pending vote, we will await the results of that vote. The next separate item to come before us is item six. That is a motion offered by our Land Use Committee. May we have that resolution? Mr. Bergweger?
Land use.
Oh, what did I say? Land use? I knew it was an L. Legislative and Rules, Mr. Bergweger.
On behalf of the Legislative and Rules Committee, this is a motion to amend the rules, Part 3C, Section 2A. The amendment is as stated in the call.
I thought there was a substitute resolution. No?
We were going to offer an amendment to our proposal.
All right. Item six being offered on behalf of one of our committees, it does not require a second. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this? I will defer to the committee chairs' agreement on order. Mr. Bergweger?
I think many of you are aware that last September, there was a conflict between the September regular meeting date and the Jewish holidays. And it was discovered too late, that conflict, so a number of people who otherwise would have attended the meeting were unable to do so. So Legislative and Rules developed a proposed amendment to the RTM rules, which would accommodate conflicts of that sort and enable the RTM to reschedule its meeting to accommodate people put in that position. When we considered it at our Monday meeting, Mr. Byrne, the moderator, appeared and noted that the language as proposed could result in unanticipated postponements of the April 2014 and April 2015 meetings of the RTM. Also, that he was concerned that the language of the rule raised a question of, a separation of synagogue and state. So he had proposed a revision to the amendment, and we voted 11-0-0 to adopt the moderator's suggestion, and I will offer that amendment at the appropriate time.
Thank you. And who will be next? Josh Brown, Chair of our Education Committee.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members and guests, the Education Committee met this past Monday. Our vote on the item was 0-11-1. We felt that the calendar, you know, should be looked at when established and compare it to one that would have various holidays on it to try to steer the date appropriately around it. 0-11-1.
Thank you. Karen Sodikon, Chair of our Parks and Recreation Committee.
Good evening. The committee was a little bit confused between what was on the call and the amended version which I had, but they had not received. I read it. Unfortunately, Doug showed up after we took a vote. Really, our vote says that we wanted to wait and see what was going to happen tonight. The vote was 1-3-7.
Gordon Ennis with the Finance Committee vote.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We had no one from the committee to help us with this item, but the moderator, Mr. Burns, did appear and offer some comments regarding the memorandum that he sent to all of you. The committee reasoned essentially that it was appropriate because the duties and responsibilities of the RTM are different than the schools, that the RTM not be wed to the school calendar, and that it takes an alert person to notice that there's a conflict with a holiday and offer a change. That has been what has occurred in most years, and that seems that it should be enough for us to go forward. It's unfortunate that what happened last September, we don't want to see that repeated, but we think this rule change is a little bit too far to go. The vote on that was 1-10-1. District Nine voted yes. District Two abstained. Thank you.
Alan Small with the Town Services.
Transportation Committee. Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator.
Waiting. Begins with a T.
Exactly. Transportation Committee had Doug Wells attend our meeting and present the substitute resolution, which seemed to take into account the concerns of modifying the schedule of the RTM, along with the concerns raised by the moderator. And we did have some discussion about whether any change was even necessary, that the status quo, just publishing the schedule of the meetings and allowing people to look up their own schedule, to take into account all different religions, was how things had been done now and would continue to work. After we said that, the vote was taken, and we voted 7-0-2, with the two abstentions related to no change really being required, with Districts Two, Six, and Eight absent. Thank you.
Thank you. Alexis Volgares with the Health and Human Services report.
Good evening. Doug Wells came to our committee, and he was very clear in explaining the rationale behind the proposed amendment. We had very little discussion. I think everyone on the committee wanted to make sure that we didn't run into the situation we had last September. So our committee voted in favor of this amendment, 7-0-0 in favor. Districts One, Two, Three, Seven, and Nine were absent, and the Red Sox are up, 1-0.
Peter Berg with the Land Use Report.
Evening again. The Land Use Committee took up the item as it appears on the call. The consensus of our committee was that the, that the RTM should adopt a date-specific calendar every year for the following year, as is done by most organizations in town. Our, so our vote on this was to refer the item back to Legislative and Rules. The vote on that was 11-0-0. District Two was absent.
Thank you. John Harkins with the Town Services report.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, fellow members of the RTM. We met and voted 11, I'm sorry, 10-0-0 on this item in favor of the calendar. General conversation and agreement that the substitute resolution from Mr. Wells should pass. Mr. Mistrakio from District Ten may propose a simple procedure that will present the calendar at the first meeting in January, so that any objections could be handled at that time to meet the needs of the members of the RTM. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bergweger?
The Legislative and Rules Committee voted 11-0-0 to amend its original proposal, so it would read as, follow. There is a section in the rules which lists all the dates, and then there's a final paragraph, and the final paragraph would be revised to read, notwithstanding the... the schedule described above, if the September meeting date falls on either the day before or the day of a holiday for which the Greenwich Public Schools are closed, the September meeting will be scheduled on the next available date." That makes it September, and it takes it away from the other, other months of the year where there might be some, uh, conflict.
All right, so you are proposing that amendment to item six. All right. Uh, currently before us is the Legislative and Rules Committee motion to amend item six. I'll read it one more time. It, uh, deletes the words, this is in the, um, final paragraph of the proposed change, deletes the words "a regular Monday" and substitutes "the September." So if the September meeting, and then adds "date" in the next line, delete "religious," and in, uh, the following line, change the word "regular" to "September." All right, we can adopt amendments upon unanimous consent, but if there is a single objection, we will then proceed, uh, to have discussion and a recorded vote. Is there any, uh, objection to the Legislative and Rules Committee motion to amend item six? Hearing none, that amendment may be adopted upon unanimous consent. Discussion on the amended, well, all right, hang on one moment. All right. Uh, I have the result of the vote on Mr. Tuthill's motion to limit debate. That, uh, motion requires a two-thirds majority to pass. Those in favor, 1-12, abstaining 59, I'm sorry. Those, those in favor, 1-12, opposed 59, abstaining three. For purposes of computing a two-thirds vote, we do not count abstentions. So 1-12 and 59 is 171. Two-thirds of 171 is 114. There were 112 yes votes. That motion has failed.[780.82][780.82](laughter) All right, discussion on item six. Yes, sir?
Does it need, uh-
Could you please come forward, Mr. Edwards?
Point of information, Mr. Moderator, doesn't the right to, or the, uh, action to refer it back to committee take precedence over putting an amendment forth?
Well, is the Land Use Committee, they haven't made that motion. Are you intending to make that motion, Mr. Berg?
No.
Oh, I thought you, I thought you were-
Mr. Bergweger informs me that if, if, if we referred it back, he'd come back with the motion he just made.[842.23][842.23](laughter)
Okay. All right. Discussion on item six. Mr. Bierman, District nine.
Is it true, Mr. Moderator, I have 10 minutes?[859.00][859.00](laughter) All right. My name is Bob Bierman. I'm District nine. This is a, a motion that I'm most probably the principal advocate of, and what I want to address is that some of the comments made, uh, by people who are opposed to this motion. One was that, uh, we shouldn't follow the school calendar. Well, first of all, look where we are now. If the schools are closed, they would have to have a new type of arrangement to have the maintenance people here to keep the school open. Uh, and the school in its wisdom has decided to respect the Jewish holidays by closing the school for those days, and certainly we can follow that respect. And I should say that my understanding is that the United States Congress, House of Representatives, and Senate are closed for the Jewish holidays. Uh, as to the question of whether or not, uh, a calendar can be created and someone will look at it, it didn't happen last year. Um, and there's no reason why you can't least follow the school calendar to know when to close the school, know when to close, uh, the RTM meeting for the Jewish holidays, and in addition, have that calendar. And mind you, remember that we do not have meetings in July and August, so as a result, you may have a problem where the notification may be too late to do what has to be done to, to postpone the meeting. I, out of respect, I would like that you vote for this rule. It makes sense. It's easy to follow. Thank you.
Further discussion on item six, as amended. All right, um, will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item six as amended, and proceed to poll your delegation. Item seven now comes before us. May we have the resolution on that item?
Otherwise, we would-
Joan Sullivan, Director of Purchasing.
Good evening. Item number seven is a request in the amount of $150,000 to be used for consulting services related to a proposed new telephone communication system. This item did come before the BET at its September meeting, and it was approved with conditions.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item seven has been moved and seconded. Gordon Ennis with the report of our Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen. There was, uh, there was quite a bit of discussion on this item. Uh, Ms. Sullivan presented. Eileen Engels was there along with Doug, Doug Layden, of Layden Associates. Uh, my report is, uh, is widely distributed to all the district, uh, chairs, and it's also posted on the RTM site, so you can read it in detail. Let me say, uh, two things. One, uh, the, the committee was disappointed that there's no one, it appears that there's no one watching the store. We have 25-year-old telephone system, and we're surprised that it's running out of time. So somebody should be alert to that, and this item should have been on the CIP, and it should be. It might be ranked 16, or 25, or 30, but there's no reason why it's not on the CIP. And the committee was frustrated by that and urges that the town take steps to be sure that items like this, in the future, are recognized as liabilities, future liabilities the town has to fund. And, secondly, let me tell you the votes. The vote overall was 6-6-0. Districts three, four, six, eight, nine, and 11 voted yes, and districts one, two, five, seven, 10, and 12 voted no. What's, uh, requested here is an appropriation of $150,000 to complete an RFP, so that we can find out what we need to do to repair an aging telephone system. So, half of the committee thinks it's reasonable, the other half says no. Make your own mind. Thank you.
John Harkins with the report of our Town Services Committee.
Thank you. This, uh, item engendered a lot of discussion. Um, we had guests, Mr. Crery, Ms. Engels, um, Joan Sullivan, Dustin Anderson, and Doug Peretta from Layden Associates to speak to us, to inform us about why we have an old system, why it needs to be upgraded. We did that. The key issues that we can walk away with, where there was a need for a multimillion-dollar upgrade, that came as an interim appropriation, and there was questioning, "Why now? Why couldn't we have anticipated it?" And the question we always have to ask is, "What went wrong? What are we going to do to fix it, and what do we do to prevent it in the future?" And we felt that we didn't have the crispest answers, crispest answers on that, but, um, but we voted 11-0-0 nonetheless, to move ahead with the item, because we believe that it's necessary to find a resolution to the problem. That said, there were a number of people who had questions about the process, the CIP. You've heard those before. I won't repeat them. I'll save you that time. Um, but we really would like to have some strong study of, of this, and where, where telephony belongs, whether it belongs in purchasing or IT. It would appear that because of the changing technology available in telephony, that we really should place this in IT, and Mr. Crery spoke to that. We thank you for that information. Thank you very much.
All right. Just learned something new, telephony. I thought it was telephony.[1300.33][1300.33](laughter) Just kidding. Discussion, discussion on item seven. Lucia Jansen, District seven.
Good evening. My name is Lucia Jansen, and I am a member of the Budget Overview Committee. Like many of my RTM Finance Committee and Town Service colleagues, I share their frustration that once again, because of lack of management planning, the RTM is forced to make a decision on core information technology with what I call a hair-on-fire scenario. Otherwise, tragedy and severe consequences ensue. In this case, the entire town departments, from the nursing home to the police department to the library, is presented at risk of losing essential features or overall phone service without an upgrade to the obsolete, existing 20-year-old system. I read all the Explanos and also conducted my own research. My research included reading the various town management reports, and what I found is actually a greater issue than the issue at hand, and that is that virtually none of our town management reports had even identified the phone obsolescence issue, let alone allocate dollars for a solution. Consider, for example, the item didn't include on the capital improvement process, as you've heard from the other two reports. That's our most core management report, but we also had just recently had a strategic technology plan done for $150,000 by Barry Dunn. That did not include the phone obsolescence issue. In fact, it defined it as a medium issue. There were three categories, critical, higher, medium. This one was a medium, which is defined as needing attention in three years. Then, in the annual reports, each department had, has an annual report describing their accomplishments, their goals, going forward, what's needed. No mention of the phone issue in the annual report. Fourth, and final, there's no central report describing all of our information technology phone assets, the hardware, the software, purchase date, service level agreements, everything in one place to keep track of what we have. Keep in mind, the manufacturing question, Avaya does have a formal notification process of all their products. You can go to their website, and it clearly states their end-of-sale date, and in this case, they give you three years by, from the time they end of sale to the time they stop supporting. Further, it took an independent consultant who did a forensic accounting of our phone system that surprisingly discovered that it's not three systems out of date, it's 25 systems. Clearly, this was a breakdown, not only of technology, but of people, processes, and technology. And for those of us who come from the tech sector, those three do not work well. You do not have a functioning system. Going forward, if these are not addressed, we will shortly be experiencing, once again, another surprise burning hair scenario. As I read the research and information, this system, the phone system, is not a monolithic system. It has got many components. The actual dial tone, the voicemail, the police E91 system, on all levels, hardware, software, handsets, all of them were overlooked in obsolescence. What is frustrating is that this interim appropriation comes on the heels of what I call the burning hair scenario of our 20-year-old radio system, as well as our 15-year human resource system, and a payroll system that has, is based on paper for the most part. We need to get our technology planning in order, so this doesn't happen again. I'm looking forward to this phone system to be in the normal capital process. We get a full accounting of what's needed, a total cost of ownership of the normal five-to-seven-year plan, and we do this in the way that saves a taxpayer, keeps service levels high for the Greenwich resident, and really performs at the level that this town should be performing. Thank you.[1600.23][1600.23](applause)
All right. So, so you see, you can say "hair on fire," but pants on fire, I'm not so sure that would work.[1613.51][1613.51](laughter) John, John Crery, our town administrator.
I'm pleased that I only, that I'm not limited to three minutes. Uh, this is, this issue is something that came to our attention about December of last year. We received a letter from Avaya, who's our vendor for our software for our phone system, and they indicated that the software that operates our system is reaching end of life, and that they would no longer support it. Now, our system, our telephone system is one system. We don't have 25 systems. We have one system. It's the same system at Tanya Witherall, it's the same system at the, at the Greenwich Library, it's the same system at Town Hall, it's the same system at all our volunteer firehouses, all of the various locations where we have phones, and there's 25 little locations, including pump stations and things of that nature. They're all part of the system. Unfortunately, Avaya did not give us significant, give us adequate notice that they were going to cease providing support to our software. Our system works fine. Our, if you go to any of our Town Hall, look at all of our facilities, our equipment, the equipment is in good shape. It operates. It does what we need to have done. It's not the absolute state of the art, but it's quite adequate for what we need to do. We've used it in, in many different, for many years. It is not 25 years old. It was first installed 25 years ago, but has been updated, upgraded many times over the last 25 years. The state of the world in terms of IT, uh, telephony, telephony, telephone, telephones is-
(laughter) I'll take responsibility for that, John.
Appreciate it. Uh, there's many areas for significant improvement that are available out there, but we weren't planning on making a major step forward, except that this came to our attention in December. We then worked on it, and we put some, some effort into it to see, because the cost was $350,000 for this upgrade on software. It's very similar to the software you have on your personal computers. If you have Excel, you know Microsoft is no longer supporting Excel. You got to go to the next version or even the further versions. And this is, uh, what, what we found with Avaya. Now, the problem was that Avaya does not, uh, as, as Lucia says, they put on their website when end of life is expected, but that changes. That's not what it was when we, when we, when we got into this. It was supposed to be much further into the future. There was a much sooner, uh, uh, end of life than we have ever been told it was going to occur. If it was strictly a $350,000 investment to continue with our existing system- If it was strictly a $350,000 investment to continue with our existing system, we would have, and we did recommend to the BET that we go that route. The BET recommended to us that we go back and actually do a much further, much more in-depth study of our system to see if there was any other alternatives. We did. We put several months into it. We brought in Steve Leyden Associates to look at our entire system, to see if there was anything else that we should be aware of. One of the members of the BET is a very big supporter of the cloud system for phones, and that is starting to become more and more viable. So we looked at that also. Any of you have read his reports, Steve Leyden's report, which would show you some of the alternatives and ideas that we did explore. Our ultimate conclusion was that there were also several other areas of our phone system which were going to reach end-of-life in 2014, 2015, and that if we were to make the investment necessary to bring them up to the standard that we think is appropriate or necessary, we'd spend another $700,000. So the conclusion was, if we're going to spend $1,100,000 to keep the existing system operational at the level we want, it makes much more sense to go out and change the system completely, and that's the direction we're going in. Our recommendation to the BET was that we spend approximately $150,000 to prepare a request for proposal to find out what the actual cost would be with several different scenarios. When those scenarios are complete, and we've met with the vendors, we know exactly what the cost would be, we would return to the BET and ask for another appropriation to actually make the purchase. Now, that may, in fact, fall at the same time as the CIP, in which case it would be part of the CIP. But if it comes before that, and we feel there is a need that this be expedited, then it would come back to the BET and ultimately to this body for an appropriation to buy the phone system. We think this is an important investment for the future of the town. We're not spending your money frivolously. We look very closely at each one of these investments, and if we can maintain what we have, and it's an appropriate system, we'll maintain it. But if it makes sense to make the leap forward into new technology, new improvements to our system, we will do that also. What we're here for today is it's time to move forward. We think this is an investment that's needed for the future of the town. We recommend that you spend these funds.
Thank you. Further discussion on Item 7?
Moderator.
Joan Caldwell, District 10.
Mr. Moderator, members of town meeting. District 10 took this up at great length at its meeting last Thursday night, and we're lucky in that we have a couple of our members who are very, very well into technology and who are good IT people. In discussing this, we were concerned because the town has gone deeper and deeper into technology, as you would expect, and we feel that we've had enough of this equipment around and our programs around so that it isn't surprising when something may begin to fall. Now, the telephone system is the easiest thing and the most obvious, but all of it comes under IT, and it is our understanding that we are going to be getting a new IT director. The district members felt that we could make a terrible mistake by sending out an RFP that doesn't encompass all of what we really want by way of information and study, and that we'd be better off slowing down a little bit and holding until we get a new IT director in place who will marshal the whole procedure as it applies to telephones, as it applies to any area of technology in the Town Hall, the Police Department, Nathaniel Withersall, anywhere else in town. We have, at this moment, the potential to make a mistake that will be very costly, and it might be better off to slow down just a few months until the new IT person is in place. And so, therefore, on behalf of District 10, I make the following motion. District 10 moves that Item 7 be postponed until a new IT director is in place.
All right, Ms. Caldwell, I cannot accept that. If we are going to postpone, we must postpone to a date certain, or you could postpone indefinitely.
Mr. Moderator, in view of the information you have given me, I think it is probably more beneficial, since the body has heard our thinking and the First Selectman has heard our thinking, that we postpone the motion indefinitely with the understanding that there are an IT director is coming.
All right. Is there a second?
Yes.
It has been moved and seconded to postpone Item 7 indefinitely. That is debatable. Discussion on the Caldwell motion to postpone Item 7 indefinitely.
Does it become mine, or is it still yours?
Becomes yours. Mr. Brown?
Through you, Mr. Crery. What would your delay, how would your delay impact moving forward on this?
The question is to Mr. Crery, how would the delay impact moving forward with this issue?
Well, we had hoped that the RTM would approve the $150,000 tonight, which would permit us to prepare a draft RFP. We'd then go out to all the various vendors, meet with them, ask for them to submit proposals based on that RFP, and once that is complete, we have all of our information together, we would then return to the BET and make a recommendation to them for the additional funds, and as part of that would be the approach that we'd go forward. The committee that is working on this is quite broad. This question about delaying has been brought up before. Unfortunately, our new IT director probably will not be hired before March or April of next year, and we really don't feel that that is appropriate, to wait that long. Mr. Utorian is not retiring, I believe, until the end of February of this year. Now, he is part of the team that's working on this, as are members from the Board of Ed, as are members from Nathaniel Withersall, Greenwich Library, Captain Cordick from the Police Department. Perhaps the most important member of the team that's working with us on this is our consultant, Steve Leyden and Associates, specifically Steve Leyden, who happens to be here today. Unfortunately, he wasn't here during our committee meetings last week, but the BET did have the pleasure of his presence, so you've had an opportunity to listen to his depth of knowledge. We're very pleased that he works with us on this very complex subject.
All right. Further discussion on the motion to postpone indefinitely. Michael Mason, Chair of the BET.
On the motion to postpone till we have a working towards a new IT director, phone service in the town is not under the purview of the IT department in the town. It's in purchasing on the town side, and the Board of Ed has their own. If we defeat this, I will explain further more some of the merits of the phone system. So waiting for the new IT director. If you currently look on our administrative level right now, phones are not in IT.
Mark Pruner, District 10. Discussion on the motion postpone indefinitely.
I think that exactly illustrates the point that we have here. Phones should be in IT. Anybody who is dealing with phone systems these days, who has a Cablevision phone or anything like that, knows that it's voice-over IP. The costs are a fraction of what they are with traditional phone costs. Those issues have changed significantly. We need input from a well-qualified IT director who will be here. In addition, this program, or this proposal, covers a vast array of other communications media. With an IP-type system, those things tend to be integrated. In other cases, due to security, they shouldn't be. All of these issues need to be taken into account and need to be handled on an integrated basis, and we shouldn't rush into it, as well as the whole issue of the delay. This is what the RTM is here for. I would recommend that you vote for this motion to delay it indefinitely. Thank you.
Lucia Jansen, District 7, speaking on the motion postpone indefinitely.
I would encourage the body to support this. This is a surprise, and I think it's a terrific idea, if only because, think about it, the very people that brought us to this situation are the ones to make the decision going forward out of this situation. So I think we need fresh thinking, fresh approach, modern ideas. Telephony today is really video, phone, data. It's truly a complex computer system. My 10-year-old could tell you that. So I really encourage the body to, let's get in-house, not an external body, an external consultant tell us. In-house, someone leading the charge. Thank you.
Further discussion. Bob Brady, member of the BET, sometimes speaking as an individual.
Does that give me more minutes?
We'll ask Mr. Tuck.
Mr. Moderator, members, guests, Bob Brady, a member of the BET. Last January, when the administration brought this item to the BET, I suggested to the Budget Committee of the BET and then to the BET itself that we not appropriate the $350,000 to Avaya. It sounded to me very much like extortion. We sent it back to the administration. I spent time with them, working with, I think you know them as Cablevision, their some other name that they've got. They run LightPath or whatever, which is our, run our network and provide telephone services, VoIP and the like. We talked with them. We talked about a VoIP system, a cloud system. The indications were that might be a way to go. Out of that grew the hiring Steve Leyden Associates to take a look at all of our needs. That uncovered the additional $750,000 that we would have to pay in the next couple of years if we upgraded our current system, so that we would then have a new 1990 system. His work identified four paths. One, patch up the existing one, make it like new, but it would be the new 1990 system, which would be a centralized system, I'm sorry, decentralized system with no inherent backup, just pieces of equipment around town. The second approach was to build that system with new equipment, so we would have a modern, still decentralized system, and that was of the options the most expensive. The third alternative was to build a modern centralized system. It would be VoIP. We would have the equipment in the basement and the attendant management issues associated with that. And then the final was a cloud solution, which many of you are probably using, VoIP. You don't have a lot of equipment other than a handset, and somebody else, Cablevision or whatever, somebody runs the system for you out in the great beyond, and you're connected through your internet connection, not a separate telephone wire. When this came back to the BET...
You're speaking on the motion postpone, correct?
I am speaking on the motion postpone, but I understand I'm allowed to go to the substance of the item.
That's true.
Is that correct? And I don't have three minutes. Thank you. Thank you, 101. In looking at this, we got it back to the BET in September. The request was for $1 million and a half, which would be sufficient to purchase whatever, do the work, purchase hardware, install it, get it all up and running. At the BET, or between the BET Budget Committee and the BET, we had further discussions that we wanted to incorporate the Board of Ed at a later date. Their system is alive, well, and will go on for a couple of years, but both they and we, BET at least, wanted to include them in the ultimate town-wide communication system. We also wanted to make sure we were looking at a true cloud solution alternative to an iron-in-the-basement solution, and there are a couple of reasons for that, but as many of you realize, the town has had historically a problem maintaining stuff that it owns. Maintenance tends to get pushed forward and deferred, and things don't get changed on time, and then somebody suddenly calls and says, "You're dead next week." The cloud system, there's less investment in hardware, you pay higher operating costs, and somebody else is taking care of all of that, and the system and hardware upgrades run along with the, as you go. The questions to vendors to elicit the responses we need is not a trivial question. It's not, "What do you got?" It's, "How do you solve our problem? What's your proposal?" And the problem includes Board of Ed, two or three years out, as well as dealing with the town side now, the 25 identified sites, backup redundancy recovery, which we don't have now, we would like to have. The proposal before you is $150,000, which I believe is more than sufficient to cover the cost of developing the request for proposals, getting it approved. It comes back to the BET, is one of the conditions, if the BET approves the request for proposals, get the responses from a number of vendors for different types of systems, not just one type of system, but to me, they set of requirements, and analyze those, come up with a recommendation, and work that through the BET and the RTM on the timeline that makes sense from doing the work. So as Mr. Crery said earlier, if the time fits that it drops into the CIP schedule, fine. If it's earlier than that, I think we would move it forward. This is one of those situations where, as, again, others have pointed out, we got here by a process that, when we look at it, none of us like, but we are here. We have a telephone system which is at the end of its life. It's basically on short-term maintenance. If hardware goes down, that can't be replaced, and there isn't around, we're going to lose functionality. The longer we wait to replace it, the more likely it is that we are going to encounter that loss of functionality. I would encourage you to vote for the 150, pass it, get the work going, and at the same time, perhaps several through VOC or whatever, or sitting in on the BET meetings, figure out and watch what's going on with it and get back at the question of how we can improve our management processes to prevent these sorts of situations from recurring. In any event, I urge you to pass the 150, and I believe that means voting no on the motion to postpone indefinitely.
Further discussion on the motion to postpone. Angela Hyland, District 7.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator and fellow RTM members. I strongly suggest that we, I strongly suggest that we support District 10's motion to postpone indefinitely for all the reasons that you've heard as it relates to technology, but also this is an interim appropriation, and I think what you've heard here is that it's a multimillion-dollar new telephone system, and that the subsequent appropriations are probably going to be interim appropriations also. So that means this multimillion-dollar system will never hit the CIP process. We have a process that should be followed here. This new telephone and IT system should be vying with other capital projects, other equally deserving projects, and so I suggest that we do. Interappropriation should be saved for totally unanticipated items. This is not unanticipated. We've known about this for a long time, and so I strongly suggest we support District 10's item. Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion to postpone indefinitely. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Caldwell, motion to postpone Item 7 indefinitely, and I ask that you poll your delegation quickly so we need the results of that vote before we can proceed. I don't believe I announced the vote on Item 6. Is that correct? Item 6 was the... Item 6 was the amendment to the RTM rules regarding meeting dates. Those in favor, 129. Opposed, 36. Abstaining 10. That amended item has carried. All right. Without delaying the pending vote, this might be an appropriate time if you want to get up and stretch, we will await the result of the vote on the motion to postpone indefinitely before proceeding further. I have the result of the vote on the Caldwell motion to postpone item 7 indefinitely. Those in favor, 77. Opposed, 92. Abstaining 3. That item has failed. Further discussion on item 7. Is that Alan Small? Alan Small, District 10.
Point of information, Mr. Moderator, through you, to whoever the appropriate person would be. I looked through these documents and was unable to find when the town received this letter from Avaya notifying us, but I was doing some quick back-of-the-envelope town math, and Mr. Brady mentioned that January, the BET saw this. You know, there's a request for proposal. Leiden Associates has been working on this for six months, so I'd like to know, I'm estimating it's probably over a year that the town has been aware of this and it's just coming before us, and people are just learning about this. I'd like to know when Avaya sent us that letter. Thank you.
Is there anyone who would like to respond to that? Joan Sullivan, Director of Purchasing.
In early December 2012, the town received notice.
Thank you. Further discussion on item 7? Well, um-
Lucia-
Hang on, hang on a minute. Ms. Janson, you've already spoken on this, so until I'm convinced there's no one else who wants to speak-
Okay.
-I'm going to allow them an opportunity. Is there anyone, is there anyone else who would like to speak on item 7? All right, Ms. Janson, I have you having spoken for four minutes, so you would have a balance of six minutes.
Well, I just wanted to mention that the corporate, I went to the corporate Avaya website, and they do have a distribution system that includes two important dates. The end-of-sale date, which is the last time you can buy the product from Avaya, and then the end-of-manufacture support date. They give customers three years' notice between those two. So by the time that they finish selling the product, they give you three years to buy parts, they will have trained personnel. End-of-manufacture support means we now have to move on. This is standard in the technology business. Companies, technology companies have to move on. Microsoft moves from '95 to '98 to Windows 7. They will support only so long before they say, "You're on your own." So Avaya had notified the customer base, and they date the memo as to when they have given the notice. So this notice was out four years ago. That the town didn't have it is a question as to why we don't have, again, what I was talking about, a central report that gives all this very important product life cycle situation. So what I would call a predictable crisis. Thank you.
Mr. Crery.
Do you want to come, Steve? We were notified in, in, in December of last year. We had no pre-notice about it at all, and I've asked Steve Leiden, and who's our consultant on this, just to speak about this, and any other quick questions you might have.
Mr. Moderator, can you ask our guest in the back to keep it down?
All right. I'll ask everyone to please take a seat. If you are not a member, we do have the, the back rows reserved. Otherwise, please step outside if you're going to have a conversation. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, RTM. Just a quick two-second background on me. I've been in this business now 33 years. I've had my own firm now 22 of those years. We work for other clients that are right here in Connecticut, City of Stanford, St. Francis Medical Center, Fordham University right here in the Bronx, Fuji Film nationally. And we actually have two other clients right now, including Fordham University and City of Rocky Mount in North Carolina, that have very parallel journeys to what you are currently encountering. Okay? And that is really, the manufacturers at large really have no interest at all in supporting legacy systems that are 10-plus years old. They don't want to invest anymore in the technology, because really, as some of our colleagues have stated, voice-over IP and unified communications is really the current state-of-the-art as to where the market is going. And I can tell you this, one of the designs that we built into our needs assessment as we reviewed all of the findings, we interviewed many departments, we came up with what we called a centralized design. That means that we can build a two-core system, meaning that if we have a system working at one site, and if we lost it, we could fail over to the second system and run the entire town off of one of the two systems. That's one of the designs that's built into this, this going-forward design. That particular design worked very well during Hurricane Sandy with many of our other customers in the New York metro area, including the New York Presbyterian Hospital amongst others. Okay? So we work for major customers such as yourselves and the multiple thousand endpoints scenarios. I can tell you for end-of-life, it is very typical of Avaya to give a four-to-six-month notice to the client. Yes, those notices are in a public venue, but those notices are actually designed to supply to the VARs, to the value-added resellers. Those particular notices are not driven to give to the enterprise customer. So we find with our particular customers, when we're hired, it's, it's typical that you get this notice at the last minute. We just got another customer, just got a six-month notice for their NEC system, has been told that their 10,000-line system will no longer have support as of March of next year. No more NOC, meaning, you know, Network Operations Center, no more staff, no more parts, so they're a little bit more severe. But I can tell you that we escalated your situation to the president of Avaya, Kevin Kennedy, who I met personally down in Florida just a couple of months ago. Okay? And I asked one of his executives for a little bit of borrowing time to give you enough time to start to make some essential changes. Okay? And the other talking point about IT, yes, we work for a lot of IT directors, we work for a lot of CIOs and chief technology officers, so that's one of the possibilities for moving forward. I can tell you this, that unified communications and telephony closely parallels everything that, at a very high level, CIOs would be looking for in a going-forward solution. So I, personally, I wouldn't hold this up in light of a CI, of a CIO decision. In fact, there's, there always can be made some small modifications depending upon how the CIO is looking at the venue going forward. Because really, when you think about it, by the time the CIO is planted, hired, really footed with a going-forward strategy, it could be 12 to 15 months out. And do you have that kind of time? And, and we've been warned, even by the VAR here locally, that if the system incurs some kind of failure, or in the event that we need some type of update, okay, and in fact, it fails and we can't get dial toned, they can't support us. We've been told that. So again, it's, it's a matter of risk. Okay? And we've been through this many times with other clients, and it's really, it's that simple. It's a matter of risk. Can you live without a telephone system for two to three days as the town of Greenwich, Connecticut? That would be a simple question to ask of you.
Thank you. Further discussion on item 7. Mr. Pruner.
Point of reference for Steve Leiden, is he saying that despite the vast number of issues that have been solved nationwide, that nobody anywhere in the nation could support this system after that date?
The question was, is there no one who could support this?
Well, the-
No one else?
The, the support issue is manufacturer-driven, not, not VAR-driven. So it's really, there are some third-party vendors who are value-added resellers who will try to best fix it as they can, but it's typically, it's not supported, it's not encouraged, and it's, I hate to use the word real Goldberg, we're going that, we're going through that exact issue right now with a legacy Octel system that's over, that's voicemail, sorry. It's over 25 years old, and, and basically, they're doing an ad hoc in order to fix an irreparable challenge that will happen with this other customer as of January 1. Basically, if I leave you a message on January 1, 2014, it's going to leave you a date stamp saying, "Steve Leiden left you a message, January 1, 2013." Why? Because I don't think anybody ever, on the Octel side, ever thought that a system was going to be designed to work and last 25 years. Technology is, moves a little bit quicker than, and than that normally.
Further discussion on item 7. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item number 7, and proceed to poll your delegation. Item number 8 now comes before us. Al Kaba, Director of Labor Relations.
Mr. Moderator, members of town meeting, good evening. Item 8, resolved at the representative town meeting and exercising its authority pursuant to Connecticut general statutes, Section 7, 474B, hereby approves the funds necessary to implement the terms of the Town Greenwich Municipal Employees Association Collective Bargaining Agreement covering fiscal 1314. Said funds having previously been appropriated in the adopted fiscal 1314 budget.
Same as appears on the call?
Same as it appears on the call.
Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on item 8 has been moved and seconded. May we have the reports? David Detchin, Chair of our Labor Contracts Committee. Mr. Detchin is going to give us the labor contracts report on the three contracts that were on our agenda tonight. That is item, items 8, 9, and 14. Mr. Detchin.
Mr. Moderator, members of the RPM, pardon my raspy voice. I did battle with a hotel air conditioning unit this past weekend. I lost. And by the way, I have to confess, as a native St. Louisian, there is at least one Cardinal fan in the room.
Well, there are a lot of us Yankee fans behind you.
Yeah, all right. Okay. This, as mentioned, this is a combined report covering all three collective bargaining agreements that are or were before us this evening on the call. Your, that's 8, 9, and 14. Your Labor Contracts Committee met on 15 October 2013, and under consideration by the committee were two contracts with the GMEA and Lyuna, which were negotiated with the town and a call for RTM approval. The committee also considered a third contract between Lyuna and the Board of Education, and that, under state law, is not subject to RTM approval. But the Board of Education has asked the RTM, or at least was asking the RTM, to informally or unofficially endorse the BOE's actions through a sense of meeting resolution, and that is in fact what item 14 is or was. The GMEA contract covers about 420 employees. The town's Lyuna contract covers about 190 employees, and the Board of Education's Lyuna collective bargaining agreement covers about 165 employees. As you may have heard, the rank-and-file of Little Lyuna, that's the one with the BOE, with only about 25% of the membership participating in the vote, voted to reject the contract that I'm going to describe below. Thus, there will need to be more negotiations between the BOE and Little Lyuna. However, I'll still cover all three contracts, since we on the Labor Contracts Committee considered and voted on the three contracts, since after all, they had, all three have been negotiated in good faith between either the town or the Board of Education and the leadership of the respective collective bargaining agreements. And if in fact the Board of Education and Little Lyuna do reach agreement before the end of November, then the healthcare cost savings that I mentioned below can in fact be implemented in the context of 2014, 2015. After extensive discussions with the town's labor negotiator, Al Kaba, the committee voted 5-0-0 to recommend that the RTM approve the collective bargaining agreements negotiated by the town with the GMEA and Lyuna, to cover the period from 1 July 2013 to 30 June 2016. The committee also voted 4 to 1 to recommend that the RTM vote for this sense of meeting resolution in regard to the contract between Lyuna and the Board of Education. The one dissenter on that vote believed that that last contract ought to have been only for two years, for various timing reasons. From the town's perspective, the two major goals achieved in these negotiations were the further extension of the high deductible HSA healthcare program to all the employees under all three contracts, that is, without a POS option, to include eventually in 2015, the $2,000, $4,000 deductible and prescription copays, as well as the introduction with these three collective bargaining agreements of a wellness program that will induce employees to do a better job of monitoring their physical well-being, in the hope that the town's rather dismal experience level under these healthcare plans will improve. Since the employees covered by the Little Lyuna contract with the BOE are generally lower-paid, the town was negotiating with them, the BOE was negotiating with them for a one-time additional contribution to the ASAs in 2015 to soften the impact of the higher deductible. As I said, that BOE contract is apparently again in negotiation after the collective bargaining unit rejected the contract. Turning to the healthcare insurance, these three contracts really complete the cycle, for the most part, of extending the high deductible health savings account to all employees of the town, both civilian and uniformed. If you look at the costs, at the settlement cost summary for these contracts that's in the Explanos, you will note that this particular survey, this time around, this month, comes closer to being an actual predictor of total costs of negotiations, since this summary, in contrast with past ones, has baked into it the actual 15% increase in healthcare premium costs for 2014, and assumes a 12% premium increase in each of 2015 and 16. Now, of course, that's just an assumption in 15 and 16, but at least we are trying to bake in, or the, the town's negotiator and the town governor are trying to bake in, for our benefit, an estimate of what the actual cost, rather than the theoretical cost, would be on a baseline. As a result, the estimated medical insurance cost to the town for all employees under these three collective bargaining agreements, between 1 January 2014 and 31 December 2016, are likely to be around $35,200,000. That's assuming that we can get the, the Board of Education and Lyuna together in time in order to implement that part of the healthcare savings as of 1 January 2014. However, if these changes had not been implemented, the healthcare costs for the employees under those three contracts would have been significantly higher, namely, an estimated $39,800,000. Thus, the negotiated insurance plan changes may save us as much as $4.5 million over the three years, 2014 to 2016. Regarding compensation, as you can see, the GWI was restructured, was structured in the same way and with the same percentage increases under all three of these contracts. The staggered two-stage increase in the first and third fiscal years of the contracts were designed to ameliorate the cost impact on the town in each of those two years. In any event, these GWIs are fairly much in line with other wage increases in Connecticut. Thus, most GWIs for 2013, 14, and 2015, 16, within Connecticut, so far negotiated, are in the range between 1.5% and 3%. And in 2015, 2016, to the extent that some have been negotiated already, those are somewhere between 2.0% and 2.75%, with the average settlement over the three years at 1.81%, 2.75%, and 2.43% respectively. I note that there were, there was a special additional wage increase for dispatchers under the GMEA collective bargaining agreement, due to the fact that the town was beginning to sense that dispatchers in Stanford and Norwalk, as well as Westchester County, are receiving higher compensation, and there was the- receiving higher compensation, and there was the concern on the part of the Town that recruitment and retention of dispatchers could be adversely affected if nothing was done. As it is, the additional wage increases for these dispatchers will cost about $25,000 each, in each of the three years. In the end, your Labor Contracts Committee concluded that the GWIs were within the range of settlements and were justified by the significant savings the Town achieved in regard to healthcare costs. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harkins with the Town Services Report.
It's pretty hard to follow a good act like that. We voted on items, let me take up both 8 and 9 if I may.
Okay.
The contracts that were voted and passed, we recommend that they be passed 11-0-0. Dustin Anderson spoke to these items. The goal was to maximize savings on healthcare and avoid the penalty, kind of an excise tax on the Cadillac healthcare plans. The excise tax, which is scheduled to begin in 2017 under the Affordable Care Act, will cost the Town approximately $15 million. It's based on the cost per employee, and there is probably no way to avoid this amount in Greenwich or anywhere else in the Northeast USA. The particulars, as shown in the Explanos, were also discussed. We talked about the GWI, the need to approve prior to 1-1-2014. Talked about the number of people in, under each contract, and Mr. Anderson discussed the questions about the voluntary risk reduction or wellness programs that is designed to improve the health of the employee. Only the 45-minute kickoff portion of the program is actually conducted on work time. The remainder is up to the employee to participate. The content of the program includes blood screenings. Results are mailed to the employee's home for confidentiality reasons, and there's a group consultation with a registered dietitian. If an employee is at high risk, then he or she may avail himself or herself of an eight-week class to mitigate some of the risk factors. The smoking cessation is not included by the Town, however, it is available to employees in other ways. Thank you.
Thank you. Gordon Ennis with the Report of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, the Finance Committee voted both of the items that we're discussing now, 8 and 9, if I can combine them.
Well, we will take a vote separately on them. Right now, only 8 is before us, but...
I'm going to report on 8 and 9.
That's fine.
So we can save some time tonight. The vote on number 8 was 11-1-0, and on number 9, it was 11-1-0. District 12 voted no on both items because the delegate felt that a 2.25% increase was just too high in today's economy. Besides what you've heard so far, I just want to mention one thing. This wellness program that is installed in these contracts is kind of interesting. Employees will pay a 10% penalty if they don't participate after a year. So what does that mean? Well, let me tell you some numbers that might be helpful. The average POS plan for a single employee is $1,095. The average HSA plan is $775 per month. So if you extrapolate the penalty...
I'm sorry. Could someone prop one of those doors open so they don't continue to bang closed? Thank you.
Bang the doors loudly. If you extrapolate from that, 10% penalty would be 109.50 or 77.50 per month. The average family premium is 29.56 for the POS plan and 2,093 for the HSA, and 10% of those numbers is what the penalty would be. The wellness program is being adopted across the country by a lot of health plans and companies and organizations such as the Town of Greenwich. It's an important thing to do. It's the only way, other than firing the old people and hiring the young people, it's the only way we're going to control health costs going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion on item 8. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item number 8, and proceed to poll your delegation. Item number 9, let me give you the vote on item 7. This is the funds for the telephone communication system. Those in favor, 118. Opposed, 40. Abstaining, 5. That item has carried. Item number 9, Mr. Kaba.
Good evening. Item number 9 is a approval of the Launa Town Labor Settlement, requesting approval of the funding for that settlement for the three-year term. It is, and it appears on the call.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on item 9 has been moved and seconded. We have received the reports from the committees that considered this. We take separate votes on these because there are members who abstain, who, RTM members who may be members of the involved collective bargaining unit who abstain, so we give them that opportunity. Any further discussion? Any discussion on item 9? All right. We do have a pending vote on 8. Let's not confuse the two, but I ask the district chairs to please mark your voting cards. Item number 9, which is the Launa contract, and proceed to poll your delegation. Item 10 now comes before us. David Tice, our selectman.
Well, good evening, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. Resolve that the RTM approves the renewal of the lease with the Myanis River Yacht and Boat Club and their property located at 98 Strickland Road, Cosco, for a period of 10 years, with the term ending March 31, 2023.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on item 10 has been moved and seconded. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this? I think there was a hope that the Legislative and Rules Committee might go first. Is that true? All right. So why don't we do that? Kit Bergweger, Vice Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Legislative and Rules took up this matter at our Monday meeting. All districts were present. Eugene McLaughlin from the Law Department presented the lease. We also had Mr. Frank Maza, former Commodore, the Myanis River Boat and Yacht Club, who was available to answer questions. And Mr. Robert Krasner was there, and I will mention his comment in a moment. We started out, the delegate, one of our delegates from District 12 pointed out that, in his view, this was not actually a mere renewal, but an amended and restated lease, and he felt that the Boat Club should simply have renewed its lease rather than seeking a new lease. Mr. McLaughlin explained that the Town could not simply renew the lease because the Town required the inclusion of new provisions to protect the Town. There were changes to the insurance provisions, and a municipal improvement was required from planning and zoning, which limited use of the harbor to 55 slips and required the Boat Club to continue its current pump-out service. The lease also contains a provision for a renewal of an additional 10 years, which would take the lease to 2033 if it were exercised. That provision, we understand, was not specifically requested by either the Town or the Boat Club, but since it had been in the prior draft, it was repeated in this version. An extensive discussion ensued regarding the renewal provision. And a motion was made and seconded to delete that article and to delete any other provisions relating to the renewal. Mr. Krasner commented at that point that if another hurricane struck in year nine of the term, extensive expenditures would be required to perform repairs, but club members would not be in a position to make those repairs if there are only one year remaining in the term. Mr. Maza also spoke against this deletion. The vote to delete that article and all provisions relating to the right of renewal was 7-4-1, with districts 3, 4, 6, and 10 voting no, and District 8 abstaining. We then went through the lease and, in typical Legislative and Rules fashion, made a number of other changes, corrections, and scrivener adjustments, and those were all approved at 12-0-0, and the lease, and then the vote to approve the legal order of the lease as revised, including the deletion of the renewal provision, was 12-0-0. At the appropriate time, Mr. Moderator, I'd move to make these amendments, but I would propose to move first the deletion of the renewal provision because it is not acceptable to the Yacht Club, and then to do the other amendments, which I understand were not controversial and would be quite acceptable.
Okay. Thank you. And our next report, Gordon Ennis with the Finance Committee Report.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, this item was certainly entertaining for this committee because we've done a lot of work over the last couple of years on leases, and most of you are well aware of it, and I'm afraid some of you probably are not. Come on. That was funny. The committee didn't focus on the lease itself as much as it did what we're going to do going forward. And a motion was offered by District 12 that, I will read to you, it essentially keeps the Town and the Boat Club in the same position that they were when the lease was first brought before the RTM. The motion is as follows. Resolve that the RTM approves the renewal of that certain lease dated April 15, 2003, with the Myanis River Boat and Yacht Club for the property located at 98 Strickland Road, Cosco, on the terms and conditions contained therein as provided in paragraph 14 of the lease, for a period of 10 years, with the term ending March 31, 2023. Essentially, what this does is it creates a standstill in terms of any additional changes, and more importantly, from the committee's point of view, a standstill in any additional term of the lease, which is what was the committee's greatest concern. Thank you.
Did you announce the vote on that motion?
No, I didn't. I'll do that now.
But the committee adopted it, you're saying?
Yes, it did. The item 10 itself was not voted, but item 10 as amended was voted affirmatively by a vote of 7-4-0. Districts 4, 5, 9, and 11 voted no. District 2 was absent.
So that was 7-4-0 on the District 12 motion, you were saying?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Our next committee report, Karen Sodakon with the Report of our Parks and Recreation Committee.
Director of Parks and Rec, Joseph Sliano, was present and said he represented John Carrery for the discussion. Several members of the Boat Club were present to add comments. John Dolan, our committee member, reported that the Finance Committee the night before had agreed to, they would offer a substitute resolution. Frank Maza from the Boat Club agreed that he understood there would be a motion to delete an automatic 10-year provision, which the club is opposed to, opposed to the amendment. The club has obligations of dock maintenance, dredging projects, and needs to look far out in planning how to finance these expenses. The club, when asked, responded they do not finance any of their obligations with bank loans. The necessary funds are raised from the members, slip holders, et cetera. A discussion ensued about slip costs versus, their marina versus other town marinas. The Myanis River Boat Club is cheaper due to the fact that the members do a lot of the work, which offsets some of the cost. There are 46 slips at $26 a foot compared to Grass Island that has 18 slips with a higher cost per foot. The waiting list for the Myanis River Boat Club has 136 names on it. Joseph Sliano said that the need, the list needs to be updated, which has already been done for Grass Island. Only two or three slips turned over in 2012 at the Myanis River Boat Club. Some other issues that were discussed, the first-come, first-served basis for obtaining a slip. Joe reminded the committee that his department handles the slip leases and the waiting list. Finally, club members reminded us that they do not, you do not need to have a boat to simply join the club. The members of the club felt very strongly regarding the resolution. The Commodores stated that they want a 10-year lease with a 10-year renewal provision. This does not seem to be what is on the call. We voted as it was on the call. Our vote was 6-1-4, with District 10 absent. The no vote reflected the lack of turnover, the lack of a turnover of slips, the concern about it. Some of the abstaining votes were compared about the rates. They should be more comparable, and not happy with the first-come, first-served basis for obtaining a slip. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Berg with the Land Use Committee Report.
Evening again. So the Land Use Committee did take this up. We did, we did note that it's a 10-year lease that allows a 10-year renewal. If that's different from what's on the call, we, we did not note that. So we, our vote on the, on the item in the call with the renewal was 11-0-0. District 2 absent.
Thank you. Mr. Bergweger.
The first amendment to the lease proposed by the Legislative and Rules Committee was to delete in its entirety section 14, which provides for the right of renewing the lease for an additional 10 years by giving six months' notice, and to delete other references within the lease to the renewal. And that is the motion that I make to make that deletion.
Thank you. Given that that is offered on behalf of one of our committees, it does not require a second. It is, and is currently before us. Discussion on the Legislative and Rules Committee, motion to delete paragraph 14, the lease renewal, and related references. Mr. Von Keiseling.
Through you, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to ask two questions of the Town's attorney, which I think would be clarifying. It is my understanding that we are, the ruling of the Law Department is the reason that this lease is before us, is because there's amendments, and the amendments, therefore, require the action of the RTM. My question is, one, what were the changes that were made to the original 2002 lease, which required amendment by the RTM? And the second question is, which changes were imperative for the Town's benefit and which were simply a convenience to both parties? I reserve my time for, to address the body later.
Well, I hope you provided the Town Attorney with those questions in advance. Did you?
I'm a little dumbfounded there. I thought the attorney was perfectly well-versed after a year and a half of dealing with this on the terms of the lease. There were only certain...
So I take it the answer is no.
Excuse me, sir. Excuse me, there were certain changes made. They were not very many. We're not talking about 17 or 20 changes.
Mr. Von Keiseling.
It's a simple question.
If the Town Attorney has the answer, I would have assumed, I know the Town Attorney wasn't here, Mr. McLaughlin was, so...
Well, I'm...
Is the Law Department prepared to answer that?
Sir, the Town Attorney is a generic term.
Mr. Von Keiseling.
I'm sorry, sir, you're having trouble with your vocabulary.
Oh, boy.
The Town Attorney is a generic term. If you're going to quibble, sir, you're becoming lower and lower and petty.
Mr. Moderator, members of the...
Mr. McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Members of the representative town meeting, my name is Eugene McLaughlin, Assistant Town Attorney. I'm the attorney who handled the, the changes to this lease as a result of its coming in for its renewal. In answer to the questions as to what was changed in this lease, the matter, the matter of the lease was referred to the Planning and Zoning Commission for municipal improvement approval. Two of the conditions that the Planning and Zoning Commission put on for the renewal of the lease was that they wanted the number of slips limited to 55, and they also wanted to make sure that as part of the lease, that the pump-out facility was continued during the renewal of the lease that is presently in, in place, and they wanted that continued for the renewal. This was also run by our Risk Management Director. The Risk Management Director wanted increased insurance, particularly in the workers' compensation area. We also wanted some strengthening of the... We also wanted some strengthening of the language in terms of the town receiving notice if there was a cancellation of the insurance. Those were the, the major changes. There are also changes in terms of the reporting procedures and therefore they were incorporated not as an amendment merely renewing the lease, since it would have been, in our opinion, hard to follow, flipping back and forth. But instead, we did a renewed amendment and a restated lease so that these provisions would be in a self-contained document that would be more easy to follow. So those, in answer to the question, were the changes that were made. As to whether or not they were crucial, we felt that they were recommended changes. It was the basis on which this was presented to the, to the Board of Selectment for Approval. As far as the renewal is concerned of the, of the lease, which gives them a further 10-year period, that was a provision that was in the, the lease that was being renewed. We did not change that, but it effectively gives them not just a 10-year renewal, but an option for another renewal. That is not something that, that has to be approved by this body. It can be deleted per the motion and so I think that answers the question. Thank you.
Thank you. Further, yes, sir?
I have a question for Attorney McLaughlin. The letter is from the boat club dated September 12th, 2002. Request for renewal of the lease.
All right, you'll have to come forward to ask a question. Mr. Pirelli Minetti, District 12.
Rob Pirelli, District 12. Attorney McLaughlin. Gene, good to see you. The letter dated September 4th, 2012 pursuant to which the boat club requested their renewal in a timely manner, does not ask for a amended and restated lease. It asks only for a renewal of the existing lease. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So at any time, in the course of the negotiations, did the boat club initiate a request to make it a 20-year lease? Before, I'm talking about in the period up to the time it was submitted last January.
The question is whether or not the boat club in requesting the renewal of the lease requested as part of it that they have an option for a further 10-year renewal. I can't recall it. They specifically said that if the town were going to put these additional conditions in of the added insurance, the pump-out, the strengthening of notice, the different reporting procedures, that they wanted the 10 years. So I can't say that it was a negotiated item. I think that what it was, was taking the draft, the existing lease, and merely changing the provisions that the town wanted. This provision that had the, the further 10-year renewal remained in without being a crossout. So I cannot honestly say that that was a condition for their, their going along with these additional conditions. It was something that I think in fairness is probably a carryforward of the terms of the existing lease.
Is it not also correct that the existing lease in the discussion of the insurance requirements provides that the town can change the insurance requirements reasonably at
The question is, does the insurance have a, provisions of the lease have a section that says the town can increase the provisions of the lease at the direction of the risk management director? The specific part of this is contained in the lease in Section 8, Insurance and Property Loss. It states the town shall have the right to require the corporation to increase the above-mentioned insurance coverages from time to time and as to the extent that the town risk management director may require, but such increase shall not be arbitrary and reasonable. So that is one answer to your question. However, to be, go further in this, another provision that we put in this lease was that we also have a strengthening of the notice provisions of the town in the event that the insurance is canceled. And that is that we either be an additional named insurer, this is new language, or we receive an endorsement requiring notice of any type of cancellation. This is an important provision, we felt, in the lease requirements because of changes in the insurance industry. Brokers are washing their hands of taking on a notice requirement. So we felt it's important that this not slip between the cracks. So that particular part of it, even though the town could have increased perhaps the workers' comp as was done, we did strengthen the language that might or might not have been something within the purview of what the town risk management director had as a right.
Further discussion on item 10.
All right, Mr. Pirelli Minetti, I am recognizing you to give us your comments, not to ask questions. That would be correct. I think that, having heard, Attorney McLaughlin, thank you, Gene, I think what's clear is that what was originally asked for by the club was a 10-year renewal, which they were entitled to under the paragraph 14 of the old lease. The town wanted to make a few changes, some of which they did not need to actually change the lease to make, which is the insurance changes, most of which, though, there's some small changes. But the point is, is that what happened here is there was simply a mistake. Somebody wrote amended and restated on the front of the lease and didn't think about the fact that that created, with nobody having asked for it, a second 10-year renewal. That's not what the club originally asked for. Now it's there, they're going to fight to get it, but that's not what they asked for and it's not what they're entitled to. I think we should vote strongly in favor of the amendment to remove Section 14 and then to move on to approve the lease with the other changes. Thank you.
Further discussion on item, on the motion to amend item 10. Mr. Mazza, Frank Mazza.
Mr. Moderator and members of the RTM, just to clear up what was just said about the letter that we sent, we did exactly what our existing lease said. And I'm going to read you Section 14, lease renewal. Says, "The corporation, which is our club, shall have the right privilege and option to renew this lease for a successive additional term of 10 years upon expiration hereof, provided that it shall give written notice to the Board of Selectment of the town of its intention to so renew at least six months prior to the expiration date of the lease and further provide that such terms shall be subject to such conditions as the town may then deem necessary or appropriate." That's exactly what we did in the letter that we sent and that asked for the 10-year renewal. The town wrote the lease. The club did not write this lease. The town wrote the lease and they determined that it should have an additional 10-year option in it. And I think that's been the policy of the town on every one of these $1 leases since I can ever remember and we've been doing these leases for somewhere around between 60 and 70 years. And I would oppose the deletion of this second 10 years because it's important to the organization. And this organization, the same as a lot of others. You have the Bruce Museum, you have Greenwich Adult Daycare, you have the Teen Center. They're all the same. They're all organizations that are in it for the long run. They're not here to come here for 10 years and then say, "Goodbye, you're finished." We started, this club started 30 years ago, we've been continuing and we have to have the continuity or else can you picture what would happen in eight or nine years from now? Our lease is gone, we don't know whether it's going to be renewed or not. How can we run an organization? How can we plan? I mean, this is vital and it's not only us. You're talking about something here that is a policy decision of the town of Greenwich to continue these leases, not only for us. Think about all the other organizations that are the same as this, that have these 10-year leases and want a 10-year renewal. It's really important and I would urge you not to support this amendment.
Further discussion on the motion to amend. Mr. Detchin, District 10.
Through you, Attorney McLaughlin. Does the paragraph 14 speak in terms of a single 10-year renewal or successive 10-year renewals?
The question is, does paragraph 10 talk about a single 10-year renewal or successive 10-year renewals? Is that correct?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin.
The, I'm not exactly clear about which lease you're talking about. Because we are renewing a prior lease, that prior lease called for one 10-year renewal. So it's not required of this body to not only do the 10-year renewal, but another 10-year renewal. However, the amended, the restated, renewed amended and restated lease that's before you as part of the call does not only give the 10-year renewal that was called for in the original lease that's being renewed, but gives a further 10 years. Does that answer the question?
So the original lease says just a one-year renewal.
A one 10-year.
One 10-year renewal, yes.
I would suggest to you that in this new lease, it just says successive additional term of 10 years, that frankly should say successive additional term of 10 years. In other words, you have to have the doing in the very language that you use.
All right, I think, Mr. Detchin, if you want to argue, you're going to have to come forward. Thank you. Further discussion on the motion to amend. Paul Curtis, District 9, to be followed by John Carrery.
Members of the RTM, just two things to keep in mind. The first one, you'll see, we're wearing a community garden shirt. There's a second lease that we have to talk about, which also has a 10-year renewal in it. That one was not removed by any amendment by any committee. The second thing is, if we amend this lease, it goes back to the tenant, the members of the club, for their approval. If they don't approve it, we start this cycle again. So before you go and make an amendment and change what is before you, think that this is going to come back to you again.
I'm sorry. State that again. This does, if, if we delete it, the parties can sign it or not. It doesn't have to come back to us.
Right. So if they wish to have that lease, Mr. Byrne, we would have to approve whatever they agree upon a second time.
No, that's not true. We are, we are giving our approval for a lease that we have just changed. They can sign it or not. That's it. If they sign it, it doesn't come back to us.
No, no, I'm sorry. If, if they don't agree to the terms that we have amended, I'm sorry, I misstated what I said.
Well, then they're, they're not going to have a lease.
Right. And they're going to end up negotiating that. So just be aware that your, the amendment is going to cause a good chance that this lease will not be agreed to by the tenant. So, right?
Further discussion on the motion to amend. John Carrery, Town Administrator.
I just wanted to make it clear that the extension for the 10 years was not a mistake. Gene McLaughlin and myself negotiated on behalf of the town with the, the members from the boat club. It was clearly understood by me and I believe by the other members present that there was an opportunity for an additional 10-year extension. There were opportunities for the RTM to modify the lease because there's language in the lease that gives the RTM the opportunity to make additional requirements. There's also opportunities in the lease for the town to modify the insurance. And the final point, and the reason that we, that I thought it was appropriate to have it is because of the way they do their capital investing. They don't invest their capital funds in one big improvement during the course of a 10-year period. They make smaller improvements over the course of the 10 years, whether it's dredging or carpentry repairs or improvements to their, the grounds that have to be done. They're done in $25,000, $35,000 increments. So this takes time to save it, make the investment, make the expenditure and you just can't plan the last few years of your lease. If, if you know it's going to be a 10-year, you don't know you're going to extend, why would you spend a lot of money on a dredging unless you know you, you're going to be there long enough to, to make the investment? And the final thing is that this contract has a clause where I believe it's either 90 or 180 days where we can eliminate this lease at any time. Every lease we have in the town with our, with our not-for-profits, we can stop the lease just by giving them notice that we're going to cease this lease. Now, the RTM has to approve it, but it is an opportunity for the town, if we need that land for some municipal purposes or for any reason that we think is appropriate, we can just stop the lease. So the lease doesn't, it's not a 10-year where we can't do anything at all. We can eliminate it at our discretion. Thank you.
Well, we have others, no, Mr. Detchin. I have to recognize others who are interested in speaking.
With your statements, would you or do not conform with the contract? I'd love to know.
Well, Mr. Detchin, unfortunately, much of this should have been handled in committee. Mr. Schneider, District 12.
Thank you. I'll try and be brief. I'm a retired attorney, I can read the contract as well. It's not a question of contract legalisms. It's a, it's a concept of what this town as a matter of public policy feels it's in the best interest of the town to renew this lease for 10 years or 20 years. In other words, what we think is better and then we can draft the language any which way we want to clearly reflect that. My question is simply, and it's essentially addressed to the select board, is Mr. Carrery accurately reflecting the recommendation of the select board that they believe it's in the best interest of the town of Greenwich that this lease should be extended in effect for 20 years?
Yes.
Okay, I mean...
The answer was yes, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Further discussion on the motion to delete. Yes, sir?
Good evening. Bill Ingraham, Commodore of the Boat Club. How long has it been since we, since we started? It's been about eight months or nine months since the first time that I was up here. I asked the question on the exact same, if you remember, Mr. Moderator, on the exact same issue because I was confused about the lease as well. And at that time, we got an answer and I can tell you, I've been going to meetings ever since and this thing's been coming up and it's been a debacle every time it comes up. The bottom line is, our intent was to do what we've done for the past, well, three leases, 30 years. Every 10 years, we write this letter just as it says in our contract or our lease and we write it to what, exactly what it says. I think the gentleman previous to me had, it was, hit the nail on the head. If there isn't arterial motives, let's, don't tell me that I'm not going to get this, this option to renew because of a technical problem with the letter that I wrote six months prior to starting this whole thing. I sat in the same room with everybody involved for nine months and nobody's ever brought that to my attention, that there was this letter. So obviously, it's something else. If you don't want us to have it, you don't want us to have it. I just want to tell you how important it is to us. I think Frank has already, has already told you what it does as far as our capital projects go. There's no way that I can start a capital project in the sixth year of this lease. Dredging's going to cost us upward, probably towards the end of the lease, or somewhere in the neighborhood of $110,000, $115,000. We have, we have a clubhouse that we found out during Sandy is a little low, just about the right height. It just started to make it in the door. We're going to have to start considering what we're going to do about that. Are we going to raise it? Are we going to leave it? Capital projects. Be mindful that for us, it just can't be budgeted for, like the man from District 12 says all the time when I ask him the question. Put it in your budget, we'll get it in the next lease, whatever. We raise the funds, we have to accumulate the labor pool, we have to put it all together and get it done. That's how we've done it. Banks wouldn't lend us money on a 20-year lease. I'm certainly, they're certainly not going to lend it to us on a 10. The other thing is, who it hurts. The other thing is, who it hurts? The morale of our workers, the morale of our boaters, at the end of, at the end of a 10 year term was not even an option. I don't think an option guarantees, I might be wrong, but I don't think an option guarantees us those, those, the automatic renewal, because there's, right in here, it says, "Subject to, to the terms shall be subject to such conditions as the town may deem necessary at any appropriate time." So, I mean, it's not a guarantee, but it gives us, it gives us the opportunity as officers in the club, and probably I won't be an officer then, to make logical decisions based on that. Who would want to come on our dock in the eighth year of a 10 year term? If people know boating, which most of the people on the committee that I dealt with are not boaters, you have a place for your boat, you stay in that place until you get another place for your boat. And that's what happens basically nationwide, at least on the East Coast, I can't speak for the West Coast. So, we have five openings on our dock, and finally, the boat club becomes trans-parent, so to speak. We have openings, we're taking more people off the list. They don't want to leave where they're going, if we can only guarantee them two years, there's no way, they're never going to find a place to put their boat back. So although it doesn't guarantee us, guarantee us that time, we can make, make a reasonable assumption that we can say to them, yes, we got a very good chance of getting our lease, we have an option to renew. And mostly, what hurts the most, as far as I'm concerned, as a lifelong resident, is that by voting for this amendment and taking away that second term for us, it tells me that you've lost faith in our partnership. A partnership that we take very serious every day. Every place we've been, every time we've gone to a committee, somebody says, hey, you guys are not going to have a problem, you're the model tenant. I prefer partnership, but hey, tenant's a tenant. And we, our chests are proud, we stick our chest out and say, thank you very much, that's very nice. And then all of a sudden, we find out, wow, we're going to have trouble here. One unfortunate thing I want to talk about, and I wasn't going to do it, but I am because it bothers me so much, is there's been some misinformation. That letter of mine has been thrown around in so many different ways, nobody knows what it meant, how it meant, but somehow, it gets around that, oh, no, you can't do it with this letter that, that Bill Ingraham wrote. The other thing that really bothered me is, and I heard it myself right out of the mouth, was, oh, they'd have their lease by now if they didn't try to sneak something through. That spread around like wildfire. They tried to sneak something through. Nothing could be further from the truth than anyone in my organization tried to sneak anything through. But some people will go to any means to get anything done, and that's what I'm a little annoyed about. In any case, I'm hoping that you continue our, our public-private partnership in the way it's been running for 30 years. And I'll end just, just with one thought, because this is what really hits me below the belt. We started this whole referral back because there was a little confrontation between the selectmen and the RTM over a lease policy. I said right off the bat at this microphone, the Minus River Boat and Yacht Club support simplifying a lease, lease, lease policy if it's necessary. And I'm sure it's going to, it's going to be fair and equitable for all. I have in my hand tonight two leases, one for us and one for the garden, for the community garden, which by the way, I support 100 percent. I just want to give an example here. They both have the exact same language on lease, on lease renewal. They both have the exact same language on terms of lease, 10 years with an option for another 10. I feel a little embarrassed or a little heartbroken standing here with, with a organization that's proved itself over 30 years, getting knocked off a 10 while another organization's going to get 20 right off the bat. That's not consistency, that's not what the lease policy was about, and that upsets me a little bit. So I urge you, please, to vote this resolution down and give us what we need to continue our tradition. Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion to delete. Peg Freiberg, District 7.
I don't think that anybody in the yacht club did anything disingenuous to try to sneak anything by. However, I do feel that it's incorrect to compare the community gardens lease with the boat club lease. For one reason, and the primary reason is that community gardens hasn't even started yet at the proposed Cos Cob site, whereas the boat club has been cranking on and on and on for something like three decades now. So we're talking about giving somebody 10 years with another 10 versus giving somebody who's already had 20 or 30 years, another 20. I don't think that's a fair comparison. In addition, I would like to remind everybody here why it is that this has dragged on such a long time. First of all, you'll remember that there was an investigation by a subset of the finance committee who looked at all of the existing leases, or absence of leases, as the case may be, found a variety of very problematical circumstances in some of them, which many of us were quite disturbed by, requested that the Board of Selectmen come up with a policy that would prevent this sort of thing from happening in the future. The selectmen, for whatever reason, allowed a long amount of time to elapse without coming up with a policy. When they came up with a policy, which was something like four pages, single spaced, if you actually look at it, it's only a long set of procedures. There's not a single substantive criterion included in it as to when you would lease town property to somebody and when you wouldn't, and on what circumstances you would and what circumstances you wouldn't, what terms and conditions, et cetera. Nothing substantive, it's all just process. When it comes down to substance, it just says everything will be examined individually and...
Motion to delete, should we or shouldn't we?
Merits. I believe that we had a reason for, for postponing this, as long as we postponed it. We were hopeful that we would come up with a lease policy under which it could be examined. You are all acquainted with the fact that the policy that the joint subcommittee finally came up with, for various reasons, did not get adopted. But I believe that given additional time, it could be adopted. I'm, I think we should review, allow 10 more years to the club, but during that 10 years, figure out what our real policy is and not be trapped with yet a further 10 years at the end of this 10, coming 10 years. Let's get it right. Give them a one 10 year renewal, meanwhile, figure out what we're really doing, and then get it right. So I urge everybody to vote in favor of removing the renewal provision.
Kevin Brogan, District 2.
Remove the previous question. Second.
All right, will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Legislative and Rules, motion to amend item 10 by deleting section 14 of the lease, and proceed to poll your delegation. While we are voting, we may continue discussing item 10. Mr. Bergweger.
The Legislative and Rules Committee also...
Excuse me, I ask our district chairs to please conduct the voting quietly so that all members can give attention to our speaker.
The Legislative and Rules Committee also identified some additional changes that would either clarify or correct things in the, in the lease, and I'll, I'll go through them quickly. In paragraph one, premises, in the third line, the word premises is spelled without an R, and the R should be inserted. In paragraph eight, insurance and property loss, in paragraph C, there are two references to the corporation's employees, agents, tenants, licensees, licensees, or invitees, either damage or injury involving them. It's not clear if that includes the members of the club, and when we asked if the club had, if the corporation had shareholders, we, it was not clear if it did. So we insert the word, the words shareholders, comma, members, comma, after the word corporation apostrophe S, and before the word employees in C hyphen one and C double I. In paragraph nine, indemnification, we make those same changes, putting in the words shareholders, comma, members, comma, several places where there is the long string of agents, contractors, et cetera. In paragraph, in article 12, paragraph A2, there's a statement, upon default of the corporation, if any lien, attachment, or other encumbrances lodged against the premises by a party claiming loss, delete the word loss and insert the word against. In that same article, paragraph B, the first sentence says, if this lease is terminated prior to the full lease term, neither party shall thereafter have by obligations, the word by is a typo, it should be any. In that same article, paragraph D, there's near the end of the sentence, it says, "The sole costs and expense of the corporation in lieu of enforcing its other rights here under," should be revised to say, "in lieu of," or "in addition to" enforcing its other rights here under. Article 17, the second paragraph would read as follows, "The corporation further agrees to submit to the first selectman annual financial reports of its operations, including income statement and balance sheet for each year, strike the words 'and' within 120 days of such date, insert the words 'by April 30 of the following year.'" Then add at the end of that paragraph, "The corporation further agrees to submit to the first selectman a true and correct copy of its bylaws and all amendments thereto." Those changes were approved by a vote of 12-0-0.
All right. That is a motion to amend offered on behalf of our committee, it does not require a second. I take it there's no request for a reading of those changes? Is there any, good, is there any objection to those, to that proposed amendment? Hearing none. Those amend, those changes are adopted upon unanimous consent. All right, we are awaiting the result of the vote on the motion to delete, but we can continue to discuss this lease. Is there any speaker who would like to address the body on item 10? Dr. Carlson, District 1, who predicted an approval of this lease those many moons ago.
And I'm going to vote for an approval of this lease tonight. There are many reformers here who wanted a coherent policy coming out of the RTM committee, and the RTM committee didn't make it. And I said that the boat club should have its lease, and whatever version is coming out of the voting that we're having now, I'm going to vote for it, and I think we should proceed right away. No more rhetoric, no more speeches, we know what's going to happen, I think. The boat club is going to get its lease tonight.
And everyone else wants to give Dr. Carlson the last word on that, right? All right. Let's see what our vote looks like. No. All right, she's watching at home on TV though, I know. She, she had wanted to lead us tonight, there, there is a special occasion. First of all, it is the 80th anniversary of the RTM, October 1933. This is the 80th anniversary, but we have an even greater anniversary of sorts, and that is probably our wisest in terms of years member is celebrating a birthday tonight, 91 years. Yes. So that is Mr. Lloyd Hall of District 10.
[laughter]
All right, we have the result of the vote on the motion to amend item 10 to delete the renewal provision. Those in favor, 48. Opposed, 95. Abstaining, 4. That motion has failed. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item number 10 as amended, and proceed to poll your delegation. Item 11 now comes before us. Drew Marzullo, our selectman.
Resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed an alternate member of the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term expiring 3/3114, Andrew Fox.
Thank you. Will the member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item 11 has been moved and seconded. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this item? Do we have any committee chairs? Peter Berg, who will give us the report of the Land Use Committee on the appointment of Andrew Fox to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
So, so Mr. Andrew Fox has been appointed as a, has been nominated as an alternate to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term ending 3/3114. Our vote on this was 9-1-1. District 7 opposed, District 9 abstained, District 2 was absent. We had Mr. Fox with us, we also had Donald Heller, who's the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission, who spoke strongly in favor of Mr. Fox. We had Margarita Albin from the commission also attended. Mr. Fox's professional background is in commercial and residential real estate throughout the US. He is currently involved in residential development in the town of Greenwich. He's an advisor on real estate issues to Brunswick School and to Greenwich Country Day School. Mr. Fox serves on the, on the Nathaniel Witherell Board, he's the chairman...
All right, I'll, I'll ask our committee, our district chairs to please conduct the voting quietly, and if any member has a conversation, please take it outside. Let's, let's give proper attention to our speaker.
Mr. Fox is the chair of the Nathaniel Witherell Building Committee. Mr. Fox expressed strong support for the plan of conservation and development and preserving the town's neighborhoods. He thinks that transportation and providing housing for downsizing seniors, including affordable housing for the elderly, are some of the challenges that the planning and zoning faces. He believes that our planning and zoning regulations could be streamlined for residents. He would support changes to our grade plane regulations. Several members of the committee questioned Mr. Fox about possible... Several members of the committee questioned Mr. Fox about possible conflicts of interest given his real estate development business in Greenwich. He indicated that he had reviewed planning and zoning applications over the past two years and would have had to recuse himself only three times. Mr. Heller noted that many of our town boards have individuals whose business interests overlap with the board's area of focus. Most recently, Paul Marchese, who was a local architect, served on planning and zoning. But the trade-off is that those individuals often bring specialized knowledge to their boards. So once again, our vote on this was 9-1-1. District 7 opposed the appointment, expressing his view that there is too much concentration of real estate developers on the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you. Before proceeding, I have the result of the vote I neglected to give on the two labor contracts. Item 8 was the GMEA contract. Those in favor, 139. Opposed, 8. Abstaining, 7. That item is carried. And Item 9 was the Lyuna contract. Those in favor, 134. Opposed, 9. Abstaining, 9. That item is carried. Mr. Von Keiseling.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. In view of the hour, excellent report from our Land Use Chairman. We voted 11-0-1. District 2 was abs- excuse me, that's Mr. Salisbury. How confusing. 11-0-0. Mr. Fox.
Discussion on Item 11. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item number 11, and proceed to poll your delegation. Item 12 now comes before us. Peter Tessie, our first selectman.
Good evening. Resolve that the following name, person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed an alternate member of the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals for a term expiring 3/3116, Stephen A. Sertelman.
Will the member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on Item 12 has been moved and seconded. Mr. Von Keiseling. With the report of our Appointments Committee.
Appointments Committee was not able to meet with Mr. Sertelman. We shall do so within the next couple of weeks.
Mr. Berg with the land use report.
Ditto. Mr. Sertelman teaches on Monday nights, so we're going to have to find a non-Mondays on which to interview Mr. Sertelman. So we also move to postpone.
All right. And you're making that motion now on behalf of the Land Use Committee?
Yes, sir.
All right. That does not require a second. All those in favor, and this is to postpone to December?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
All those in favor postponing Item 12 to our December meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion is carried. Item 13 now comes before us. Peter Tessie with that resolution.
Resolve that the RTM approves the lease with the Greenwich Community Gardens for a portion of the property located at the Montgomery Panitem, 129 Bible Street, Cos Cob, to create garden plots for the use of Greenwich residents. This lease will be for a period of 10 years with a term ending December 1, 2023.
Thank you. Will the member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on Item 13 has been moved and seconded. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this? Beginning with Peter Berg, chairman of our Land Use Committee.
So this is the lease for Greenwich Community Gardens. Our vote on this was 11-0-0. We had John Crary, our town administrator. We had Patty Secci, who's president of the Greenwich Community Gardens Board, and we also had Joseph Siciliano, our director of Parks and Recreation. Mr. Crary explained that the proposed lease follows the model of other town leases. Ms. Secci explained that the proposed community garden is modeled after the successful five-year program at Armstrong Court, and that the two programs combined would result in about 200 plots available to residents. Residents need to reapply annually, sign waivers, and commit to a certain number of community garden volunteer hours. She indicated that the soil in both locations has been tested for possible contaminants. Again, our vote on this was 11-0-0.
Thank you. Before calling for the next report, I have the result of the vote on Item 10, which is the lease with the Mayanis River Boat and Yacht Club. Those in favor, 123. Opposed, 11. Abstaining, 2. That item is carried. Gordon Ennis with the report of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, you know the number-one hobby in the United States? Gardening. Right. So we heard this is a new lease, as you already know, and we're happy about it and hope it succeeds. The vote on the Finance Committee was 11-0-0. Therefore, we encourage you to approve it.
Thank you. Karen Sodicon with our Parks and Recreation Committee report.
Patty Secci, president of the Community Gardens, and board members Rick Morgenot and John Eddy were present to discuss the project and offer a visual of the space at 129 Bible Street in Cos Cob. Patty pointed out that currently, the only community garden is at Armstrong Court. Several questions from the committee. How will parking needs be handled for extra parking? Answer, a large number of cars are not expected, but extra parking is available across the street at the Garden Education Center parking lot. What happens if an individual's garden is underutilized? Each holder of a garden receives a handbook explaining the rules of the community gardens. If a garden is underused, the holder may be requested to do community work or surrender his space. How are gardens managed and supervised? There's a steering committee. What water access? It will be seasonal. Water line will be installed, and the community gardens will pay the water bill. How will necessary operating expenses be met? The community gardens plan to raise $75,000 to neighbors and local businesses. The vote was 10-0-1. District 10 was absent, and the alternate from 12 was the one negative vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Kip Bergweger with the Legislative and Rules Committee report.
We had Rick Morgenot on the board of the Greenwich Community Gardens with us, and partway through our meeting, we were joined by Patty Secci. We also had Amina Ahmad of the Law Department, and Joseph Siciliano of the Department of Parks and Recreation. Just to clarify, something was stated earlier. This particular garden will have 88 plots, each four foot by eight foot, and some of them will be set up so that people who are in wheelchairs can actually access the lots, the plots. They'll be not just raised, but raised. The experience at Armstrong Court was that since 2009, 800 pounds of vegetables have been grown and donated to neighbor to neighbor, and they expect that some of the plots at this garden will be donated to neighbor to neighbor as well. At one point, a motion was made to delete the provision allowing an extension or renewal of the lease for an additional 10 years. The vote to delete that failed by a vote of 3-7-2, with Districts 1, 5, 1, 3, 5, 6, 8, 9, and 10 voting no, and Districts 4 and 11 abstaining. We then went through our usual marking-up session, and those revisions were not controversial. And the vote to approve the lease as revised, retaining the renewal provision, was 11-0-1, with District 4 abstaining because her husband had performed some services that had been retained by the tenant.
All right. So are you moving to amend?
I will do that if it's now as appropriate.
Okay. Yep.
If you think my last motion to amend was painful, wait for this one.
Can we wait? Is it possible to waive the reading of these amendments?
Can we waive the reading?
All right. You have circulated your report with these.
Yes, and these are on the website as well.
All right. Is there any request for a reading of these amendments? Is there any objection to the amendments?
I would like a summary.
Hearing? I'm sorry?
I would like a summary. He doesn't have to read everything, but just tell us just-
Okay. Here we go. You corrected the typos.
We made it clear that the garden plots are renewed annually. Fees will be reasonable and be acceptable to Director Parks and Recreation. Rules governing gardener's activities shall be acceptable reasonably to the Director Parks and Recreation. We have a specific date for the lease commencement, as opposed to something that's very general. There's a requirement that certain policy coverages be reasonable. The form of the license used to license the use of the plots by gardeners will be reasonably acceptable to the Director Parks and Recreation. And we added the words in connection with.
All right. Is there any objection to the amendments offered by our Legislative and Rules Committee? Hearing none. Those amendments are adopted upon unanimous consent. Discussion on Item 13. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item 13 as amended, and proceed to poll your delegation. That being the final item to come before us tonight, we will await the result of that vote before proceeding to adjourn. I do have the result of the vote on Item 11, the appointment of Andrew Fox to be an alternate member of Planning and Zoning. Those in favor, 120. Opposed, 1. Abstaining, 3. That item is carried. What about Item 14? I told you that was withdrawn. Item 14 was withdrawn. The bargaining unit rejected the agreement, apparently. We have the result of the vote on Item 13. Those in favor, 114. Opposed, 0. Abstaining, 1. That item is carried. That being the final item to come before us. This meeting stands adjourned upon unanimous consent. Thank you all for coming. Have a safe trip home.